Let's go ahead, and this will be an interesting experience. I want to thank you all in advance for the indulgence of moving some things around and allowing me to attend the meeting this way. Unfortunately, I'm not at a place where there's Wi-Fi, so I'm just joining you via phone. But Hank, since you are present, or Ms. Foster, since you are present, how about just going ahead and doing a roll call, if you would, please?
Sure, I can do the roll call. So we called the meeting to order. Ms. Welch?
Here.
Mr. Smitherman?
Here.
Ms. Hunt?
Here, happy Thursday.
Thank you. Mr. Franklin?
I'm here.
Dr. Sadler?
Present.
Mayor is here, and I'm here, as well as our Attorney Beau Half, staff members Ryan Moser, Joyce Walker, Stacy Talbert, and Hank Perkins. Also, we have Sergeant Stringer. And with that...
Very good.
Yep, go ahead.
Very good, thank you. Beau, will you go ahead and leave us in a brief invocation, please?
I will. Let's pray. God, our Father, we give you thanks for this day. We ask you to be with us during this meeting. We ask your special traveling mercies on our mayor as he travels, and please bless those who are in need of blessing, comfort those who are in need of comforting, heal those who are in need of healing. Be with us during the course of this meeting and take us safely home following the meeting. We ask all these things in your holy name. Amen.
Thank you, Beau. Ken, you've been tapped to do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay. We have a flag.
Just one second.
How about the one on your lapel?
Yeah, I usually have one there.
I know.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, which it stands.
Thank you, Dr. Sadler. Ladies and gentlemen, as I said out earlier, I'd like to recommend that we just have a couple of changes on the agenda. First off, we do have an addition. Mr. Smitherman would like to recognize our police force. This is National Police Week, and David would like to have a little recognition there. So that would be an addition under introductions and recognitions. I've also asked if we could please move the...move public hearings and appointments to Items 9 and 10 on the agenda, and bring forward technical review for 2021021 and unfinished business ordinance 2021022, move it forward up after our public forum, since we don't have any site plan approvals or evidentiary hearings. Ms. Walker, has been any other additions since our...since this latest agenda went out?
So far, not. We didn't get anything at 5:55, so I guess we're good.
We're good, okay. Very good. Council members will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
Melissa Hunt, I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Ms. Hunt makes a motion, Mr. Franklin makes the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, Ms. Welch...Ms. Foster, will you do the roll call, please?
Certainly. Dr. Sadler?
Aye.
Ms. Welch?
Aye.
Mr. Smitherman?
Aye.
Ms. Hunt?
Aye.
Franklin?
Aye.
And I am an aye. Mayor, I'll turn it to you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Hank, will you take us to the consent agenda, please? Ladies and gentlemen, let me...I believe I heard some discussion earlier. Consent agenda are items that routinely come before the town council. Any council member can ask that any items be pulled off and reviewed or considered separately. Otherwise, we take them all as a group, and these are items such as minutes and financial reports and those types of things. Council members, is there any objection to going forward with the consent agenda, or does anybody would like...would anybody like to move anything off? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
And Ms. Welch. Welch?
Do you want me to read them out?
Hank, you can, if you want to.
Okay. All right. First, we have Resolution 2021029 for the acceptance and approval of monthly financial spending ending March 31st, 2021. Next, we have the approval of town council meeting minutes from March 11th, 2021. The approval of town council briefing minutes from April 1st, 2021. The approval of town council closed session minutes from April 1st, 2021. Approval of town council meeting minutes from April 9th, April 8th, 2021. The approval of town council closed session minutes from April 8th, 2021. The approval of town council budget meeting number one minutes from April 12th, 2021. The approval of town council budget meeting number two minutes from April 19th, 2021. The approval of town council special call meeting minutes from April 28th, 2021. And finally, the approval of town council closed session minutes...closed session meeting minutes from April 28th, 2021.
Ladies and gentlemen, if you can't tell, your council has been busy in the last few months with issues of the town. Council members, if there are no changes or additions, I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, please.
Jane has made the motion.
Jane's made the motion?
Second.
Second by Dr. Sadler. Any further discussion? Very good. Ms. Foster, please do your thing.
Sure. Dr. Sadler?
Aye.
Ms. Welch?
Aye.
Mr. Franklin?
Aye.
Smitherman?
Aye.
Ms. Hunt?
Aye.
Ms. Foster is an aye, and Mayor, I'll ask for your vote.
Aye.
Okay, and I'll let you wrap that up, then.
Very good, that's unanimous. PJ, we have a...yes, ma'am.
Excuse me, we didn't do that at the very top. I want to make sure I clean this up. So at the adoption of the agenda, when I said I turned it over to you, you technically didn't vote. So could you just make a vote for the adoption of the agenda?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. I approve the agenda, thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Okay. PJ, I understand we have a new fearless leader that is going to be over community policing. Would you like to do the introductions, please?
I will. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
As you know, we formerly had a community policing lieutenant. That was Lieutenant Brian Hall. He received a promotion on May 1st, so he is now Captain Hall. So he went away from the community services. He's actually inside downtown. So with effect of May 1st, we were granted Lieutenant Robbie Chenault. He had intentions to be here with you guys tonight, but had a family emergency and was unable to attend. He sends his deepest apologies. I think he's met most of the town hall staff, but he's anxious to meet the council. But just to give you a little bit of history, we're very fortunate. Lieutenant Chenault comes with about 26 years of experience, and he's worked every division within the sheriff's office, spending time in investigations as well as the civil aspect. So he's going to be a great resource. He'll be taking on not only Lewisville, but Clemmons, Rule Hall, and as well as Walker Town. So he's over all the community policing. So we're excited to have him join us, and hopefully in June, we can get him to join in on the meeting and do a formal introduction.
That'd be great, PJ. We'll wish him our best, and we look forward to meeting him in person.
Absolutely.
And by that time, by that time, we may actually be able to meet him in person. We'll see.
We might, absolutely. So...
Mr. Smitherman, you have a special recognition this evening.
Yes, sir, Mayor. I would like to say, well, first of all, thank you to all the police and sheriff that govern and take care of our community here in Lewisville. But I have just a brief piece I'd like to read. This was written by the Attorney General Merrick B. Garland as he honors national law enforcement during the National Police Week. In honor of National Police Week, Attorney General Merrick B. Garland recognizes the service and sacrifices of federal, state, local, and tribal law enforcement. This year, the week is observed Sunday, May 9th through Saturday, May 15th, 2021. This week is a time to honor our law enforcement officers who have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to our nation. I am constantly inspired by the extraordinary courage and dedication with which members of law enforcement act each day. I'm sorry I got lost. Putting their lives on the line to make our community safer. To members of law enforcement and your families, we know that not a single day nor a single week is enough to recognize your service and sacrifice. On behalf of the entire Department of Justice, and also on behalf of the entire town of Lewisville and everyone here, I would like to say thank you, and we are internally grateful for everything that you do.
Thank you, Mr. Smitherman. I think by unanimous acclamation, if the council has no objection, that we would heartily endorse Attorney General Garland's support of our law enforcement officials, and recognize May 9th through 15th is National Police Week. Without objection, so should reflect the minutes. Sounded kind of like a Roman Greek there, didn't I, for a second? Let it be written, let it be said. Corporal Stringer, you have a little report for us today on our public safety.
I do. We're starting to get back in full swing with COVID letting up. Hopefully, we're moving past that. But I do have some numbers for you, and as soon as we get done, I got a little bit of just some food for thought that I want to share with you guys, as well as the public, if anybody happens to be listening. But our numbers, our total calls for service was 473 calls for service, 298 security checks. There you can see 67 traffic violations and 23 alarm calls. And our priorities are around six minutes, and there's how the numbers compare to where we were at as far as security checks. We're still not into that total calls for service, and I can email each one of the council members the graph and how it shows, and if you want to see the breakdown of what type of calls and stuff like that that we're actually responding to. There's nothing that really sticks out in my mind, a rash of break-ins or anything, but if I could just have about 30 seconds to remind everybody, share a little bit of information. How many times have you seen somebody that's riding around without a license tag or something on their vehicle? So in case you didn't, if you're not aware of this, just food for thought, anytime that you're going to turn in a tag or trade cards or whatever the case may be, make sure that you turn that tag in to DMV, get a receipt before you actually cancel your insurance or switch your insurance, because that will cause your tag to become what they call as a status of revoked in the state of North Carolina. In the state of North Carolina, you got to have liability insurance, and that is your proof that you have insurance. So maybe somebody out there doesn't realize that, or maybe in the process of turning in a tag, get that tag turned in to DMV, and then, once you have that piece of paper, hang on to it, call your insurance company, and let them know that that tag has been turned in, and make that insurance inactive, and you should be fine.
Very good. Thank you, PJ.
Yes, sir.
Council, any questions for Corporal Stringer?
I just a comment. PJ, as we go forward each month while you give us the statistical report, if you could have incorporate one of these two to three minute things that like this, I think that's very good for folks that do tune in and enjoy our meetings to hear. And that was very good, what you...the information you just passed along. Thank you.
So I just come up with that, was thinking about it. So what I would ask you guys, if you have a citizen that has a question about a civil matter or a traffic matter, if you'll send it to me in an email, it might be where I can bring in somebody if I don't know the answer, but we can certainly do that, Mr. Franklin. We'll incorporate that, and if you have any ideas of what you want to share or what you want to hit on, then we'll go that route.
Let's keep them short, though.
Yeah, sure.
I'll be...two minutes, let them be.
Very good. Thank you, Corporal Stringer. Appreciate it.
Mayor, I have a...this is Melissa Hunt, Mayor. I have a comment on that as well. Thank you very much, Sergeant, for your reporting and for taking the time. One thing we may want to consider, Hank, is if we can throw like a sheriff's corner on our newsletter somewhere, and then he can just kind of dictate that same information in our newsletter, just a sheriff's corner area, that'd be great. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Hunt.
Thank you.
Any questions for Corporal Stringer? Very good. Okay, we do have a brief proclamation to read. As we know, this month is Volunteer Firefighters Month, so if...I'll read through this very quickly. Whereas the Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response Grant has allowed North Carolina Association of Fire Chiefs and the Internal Association of Fire Chiefs to create for the community, "For Unity, Be a Volunteer", a multi-year volunteer workforce solution initiative designed to address the critical needs of more volunteer firefighters, need for more volunteer firefighters in North Carolina. And whereas North Carolina has more than 1,200 fire departments, staffed more than 50,000 firefighters, with 16,493 career, and 33,913 volunteers, and whereas 90% of all fire departments are either or all are either all or mostly comprised of professionally-trained volunteers, and whereas volunteer firefighters can be called upon 24 hours a day, seven days a week, to abandon the warmth and comfort of their homes in the middle of the night or during a holiday celebration, leave the fun of family gatherings, or on sunny summer afternoons, to enter burning buildings, rescue stranded hikers and struggling swimmers, extract victims from automobiles, and more. And whereas volunteer firefighters save their communities millions of dollars every year, and whereas the majority of fire departments throughout North Carolina are experiencing a volunteer shortage, and whereas fire departments throughout North Carolina will hold volunteer recruitment events, either virtually or in person throughout the state, and whereas fire departments throughout North Carolina celebrate Fire Protection Month, therefore be it resolved, Lewisville Town Council hereby proclaims, "May 13th, 2021 is Volunteer Firefighter Day in the town of Lewisville, North Carolina, dated this 13th day of May 2021." Council members, may we have a motion to approve the proclamation?
So moved.
And Mr. Franklin, with a second bye. Ms. Hunt?
Ms. Hunt, very good. Any further discussion? I don't think there should be.
Oh, yes. Major call. May you know how many volunteer firefighters we have in Lewisville?
Jane, I knew that at one point.
I'll try to take a stab at that, Jane. Not enough volunteers, okay?
Yeah.
It's not as easy as it was back when I joined the fire department many years ago. It takes a lot of commitment, a lot of time and effort for folks to volunteer, running into the burning buildings and so forth. So anyhow, not enough volunteers. I encourage folks to...
Another question, Fred. Do you know by chance what the age limit is? I'm asking for a friend.
Jane, I would encourage you to call the fire department and just ask those questions directly to them. I do know they have...they're bringing younger and younger folks in and getting them through classroom-type stuff, and then introducing them to more physical things as they mature, if you will, actually fighting the fires and so forth. But there's a lot to learn.
I believe Lewisville actually offers a junior firefighter program to focus more towards teenagers in the...trying to get them to stay towards a career of firefighting. So even at 15, 16 years old, there's different stuff that they can do around the firehouse. Talking to Chief Needham, I think a lot of the issue that they run into is they have volunteers, but actually getting those folks to respond is a downfall, because you have people with busy schedules and everything. So we're fortunate to have the paid staff and the fire station and the amount of resources that we have in Lewisville. A lot of communities are strictly done by volunteer, and it cuts way down on our response...their response time when they're actually at the firehouse.
Yeah, I concur with PJ on that.
So we are recognizing the Lewisville Fire Department and Devine Fire Department on this day. We have a motion and a second before us. Is there any further discussion? If not, Ms. Foster?
Dr. Sadler?
Aye.
Ms. Welch?
Aye.
Mr. Smitherman?
Aye.
Mr. Franklin?
Aye.
Ms. Hunt?
Aye.
And Ms. Foster's an aye. Mayor?
Is an aye. And that should make us unanimous. Thank you very much. Hank, do we have any citizens on board for the public forum this evening?
Okay, yes, I have a hand. I'm going to...whoop, I went fullscreen. Get out of this. Okay, I have Susan. I'm going to allow you to speak now. Go ahead, Susan.
Hi, thank you. Susan Fry, 165 Will Austin Court. I know you've all listened to my comments and read my many emails on the Solomon Project, and I appreciate that. It saddens me that a developer who has built some very nice buildings here and is familiar with our wonderful town and its vision seems, for some reason, unwilling to at least follow the spirit of our town's plans. I'm not going to go through the list of UDO sections where I believe the project is not in compliance. I've already provided those to you. I just have two items that I want to mention. First, I'll simply stress again that the residential lot is not in the DTO, and that it abuts other non-DTO residential properties. And unless the plan currently on the town website is not accurate, I believe the setback shown on that side of the lot are not in compliance with the UDO. And second, the downtown overlay district, Chapter B, Article 2-1.6 H3C, which I will not read the whole thing, it's lengthy, I'll just read this. "The town may, at its discretion, consider site plans varying from setbacks and other dimensional requirements." And it goes into a lot of different reasons. But it says, "Site plans varying from the requirements may only be approved upon a written finding specifically articulating how the site plan fulfills the intent and purpose of the requirements, as well as or better than would strict compliance with the requirements, and that such site plan is in harmony with the Lewisville Comprehensive Plan. If this is approved, I would ask for such an explanation. And as always, I appreciate all the time and care that you put into governing and protecting our town." Thank you. And now Dan Fry would like to speak also.
Okeydoke. Dan Fry, 165 Will Austin Court. I'm making a final plea to the town council to deny the Solomon site plan as presented. My chief objection is the number of stories. Regardless of the arguments of the patisterous attorney and architect, I maintain that in common understanding of the word story, it is generally accepted that the vertical inhabitable space between a floor and a ceiling is considered a storied unit. There are four levels in this proposed structure, and each level should be considered its own story. As an example, when I traveled on business, I often had occasion at Book and Suite at the MC Suites near the Philadelphia Airport. Its website describes it as an all-suite hotel with a five-story atrium. Each level of suites is mezzanine style inside perimeter of the hotel, and the center of each level is open from the ground floor all up to the roof structure. Using a patisterous definition, this would be described as a one-story building, which one might say is an absurd or illogical observation. Secondly, the impact of allowing this project to be completed will be the loss of the small-town character and vision for the town's development. While I agree that this is subjective, it still remains a vital aspect of our town's vision. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fry. We appreciate your comments. Hank, do we have anybody else?
Um, no hands yet.
Okay.
Oh, here we go, Mr. Blaine Brenton.
Very good. Mr. Brenton, please state your name and your address.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Blaine Brenton, 1955 Conrad Sawmill Road, Poff Town. And I'm calling in again for the...my same...it was the junkyard there at the corner of Conrad Sawmill Road in Robin Hood, and it's been going on now for four years. Lewisville is responsible for protecting our property values, and the guy running the junkyard there, he rents the place there. He's not going to care one bit what his location looks like. It's just...it's getting worse each month. He's got vehicles and trailers and junk on the right-of-way. He doesn't have fencing all the way around his property. He's been throwing in brush to service fencing, but that doesn't work. He's having landscaped and dumped brush up on Robin Hood Road, and then he rolls it down his hill there. There's more junk being hauled into his compound, and now been working on his vehicle right-of-way. I think...I mean, Sergeant Stringer went up there to see the...had a car that stood up in the air with his mini excavator working on his car. And I don't understand how he gets away with all this. It's been, like I said, it's been three, four years now. And my last comment is with everybody getting the vaccines now, I just wonder if the city council is going to consider going back to live meetings soon.
Very good. We appreciate your comments. Thank you very much. And yes, we are considering going back to live meetings here shortly. More...don't, don't, don't change channels. We'll have more on that shortly. Hank, do we have anybody else wishing to speak?
No, we don't.
Wow.
Okay. Very good. So we'll close it. We'll close the public forum. If you're listening and would like to make written comments, you can do that by sending them to...yes, sir.
Just as soon as I said that, I had a hand go up from a Jeffrey Hune.
Very good. Ms. Hune, if you'll give us your name and your address, please, and hold your comments to three minutes.
Mr. Hone? There you go.
Okay. Jeffrey Hune, 186 Matt James Court. I've been against this whole apartment deal, whatever, since the beginning, but I'm, you know, just opinion, we get this apartment here, and we'll drive our property values down. I will move, and I will rent my house out to whomever can give me $500 a month to pay for it. And yeah, that's just it.
Very good. Thank you for your comments. Hank, do we have anybody else?
Give it a second. Oh, I have Mr. Brenton has got his hand back up again.
Okay, Ms. Brenton, generally, we don't use multiple opportunities, but go ahead if you'll make it quick.
This is Vicki McKeever. I'm at Blaine's house. Again, I don't know how to...
Okay. Yeah, go ahead, Ms. McKeever. Thank you very much. If you'll state your name and your address, please.
Sure, Vicki McKeever. I'm at 1930 Conrad Sawmill Road. I do have a question that I would like to ask Hank Perkins. This is pertaining to the matter that Mr. Brenton was talking about on there at the corner of Conrad Sawmill and Robin Hood Road. I want to...I would like for...I assume it's Hank Perkins. I would like for someone to explain why a zoning inspector has not been contacted, you know, about this issue that we're having up here. And basically, I just would like an explanation as to why that's not happened. That, to me, looks like that that was what should have been one of the first things that was done.
Yes, ma'am, we appreciate your question. The public forum is, as you know, an opportunity for us to listen to you and hear your comments. Let me say, we have had a zoning inspector out there, but if you'd like to pick this conversation up specifically with our manager, give him a call anytime, 9 o'clock to 5 o'clock. You can call Town Hall, and he'll be glad to discuss this in detail with you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your comment. Hank, do we have anybody else?
Um, no, sir, but I'm giving it a second here.
Okay. Fox, while we're waiting, we always appreciate you...
We're finished.
We're finished. We always appreciate your comments, and once again, you can send written comments to townclerk@lewisvillenc.net, townclerk@lewisvillenc.net. Stacy, you have our technical review on the Resolution 2021021.
Right, I'm going to share my screen. Can everybody see that, where it says Solomon Development? Okay. So before you, this LPBR 2021001, Solomon Development. The request includes 39 multifamily units combined with a restaurant situated in a two-story building. Each unit is proposed to have a mezzanine or a loft area. Parking is to be below grade in a parking deck and... Parking is to be below grade in a parking deck and also in a lot to the rear of the building. It's to be served by public water and sewer. The total acreage for the two lots is 1.56 acres. It fronts on the Great Wagon Road, and the vehicular access is proposed to be off of North Street. In the previous plan that we have seen many times, there was no changes made to the proposal on the site plan. The number of units remained the same. The parking calculations and impervious surface remain the same due to the footprint of the building being the same, the parking lot being the same, and then also the site access also remains from North Street. One change that was made is the architect has stated that the building is now two stories instead of four that was originally proposed. The building height was decreased to meet the overall height requirement of 48 feet. There was an elevator shaft and some other items that were removed from the roof of the building in order for it to come under the 48-feet maximum height. And if you recall, the way that we calculate building height is the average of all four sides of the building. So the building is a little less than 48 due to the rear of the building, the basement, if you will, where the parking is to enter. So the maximum, the average is 48 feet. It does not go above that. And then also, it does say in the downtown core area and the downtown overlay in our Unified Development Ordinance that for building height, the maximum building height for buildings and structures shall be two and a half stories with a maximum height of 48 feet. And in the downtown gateway area, of course, this is in the core area, but in the gateway area, it's three to four stories with a max height of 48 feet. You can see before you, what the green means is just that it's in the Yakon River WS4 watershed. The area for the request is where the yellow hash mark is. This is a visual, just so you can see the difference in the zoning. Everywhere that you see this purple is on PB. This shade of purple is on LB, which is light business. And then, you know, the yellow is residential, the green is institutional, and red is highway business. So you can just, it just gives you a visual of the different zoning districts downtown. This before you is the site plan. Again, the site plan hasn't changed over time, other than the elevations changing in order to refer to two stories instead of four stories. You can see the elevations here. And then, just for the record, the properties included are identified as tax PIN numbers 5875978451, as well as 5875977671. And the planning board held their technical review on this matter on February 10th and voted four to three to recommend approval of the request to the Town Council. I can take any questions that you have.
Very good. Council members, as you're aware, we've had, we've been reviewing this particular project for a number of months and including the most recent revision of it. Do you, does anyone, does anyone have any questions for Stacy?
Mayor, I do. This is Fred.
Yeah, Mr. Fred, Ms. Franklin, go ahead.
Yeah, and it's about parking. I want to get a little better understanding about the parking for this, this building.
Okay.
All right. I realize that there's, you know, there's a required amount based upon the structure and its use. So they came up with 69 parking spaces required for the residential piece and 32 for the restaurant piece. You know, it's like a total of 101. Then you get the 30% reduction, which brings it down to, I think, somewhere around 70, you know, 71 or two, somewhere in that range. It, and he has a total of 61 spaces that are off-street with his, what's behind the building and what is in the parking garage, or 61 total spaces. Okay? So he's counting on having to have on-street parking, okay? To make this project viable. So with that in mind, I'd like to draw attention to where it talks about credits. And I think that I'm in Article 2, and then I'm at a C here. I apologize, but it talks about on-street parking satisfying the off-street parking requirements is permitted, provided the following requirements are met. It says, "Sites eligible for credit below shall not generally be located on streets classified as collectors or thoroughfares. However, the North Carolina Department of Transportation or other applicable agency may consider locations on collectors or thoroughfares on a case-by-case basis." So my question is, has DOT, this is the DOT road, and it's going to be either, as described here, a collector or a thoroughfare, or as in your report, you describe it as a local arterial.
Right.
It's going to be a busy street. Has the DOT signed off on this?
No, sir. This is actually a town street, a town maintain. The Great Wagon Road is a town street. It is not a state road.
Well, to my, to my knowledge, I don't, as an elected official, I don't know that the elected body has signed off on that. We.
I don't, I'm not sure I understand your question.
Well, it says, "However, the North Carolina DOT or other applicable agency."
Right. That would be part of the approval tonight, would be that him being, the ordinance allows the off-street, excuse me, on-street parking to be allowed as credits, just like, just like the Town Hall has on-street parking that's allowed as credits and a lot of other numerous businesses downtown. But that would be part of his approval tonight because he is utilizing those spaces that he would be required to build as part of the project if the project gets approved.
Well, let me continue on. Still under credits, it says, "All parking shall be angled or parallel," which it was drawn that way on this site plan. But it says, "It must be approved by the elected body, the N C DOT or other agency, whichever is applicable." My question is, has his parking on-street that is applicable to this project being approved on technical matters ever been approved by any of these agencies or elected bodies? And that should be a yes, up or no, I mean, up or down, yes or no?
Well, it's a no. However, there's never been a plan that called for on-street parking that's come before the elected body for this particular property.
Well, and then that leads me to the next question. It says, "Credit for on-street parking shall not exceed 35% of the total off-street parking." So if he hadn't not have access to that, or excuse me, including that, I've lost my train of thought there, but, but my point is, I think he's went over that 35% threshold, even claiming that to make his parking viable. And I may be wrong about that. I've been trying to generate the math here.
Our ordinance allows up to 35% credit for on-street parking, and he is only utilizing 30% of that, not the full 35%.
I don't know about that. But anyhow.
Thank you, Mr. Franklin. Council members, any additional questions for Stacy?
Were all of the, these issues around parking vetted during the planning board considerations?
Yes, they were.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Stacy, explain that last point to me again, how it can be assumed that he has approval for these parking spaces? And that they're, and that they're contiguous because they're currently on the opposite side of the street?
Right. What you see before you on the site plan is what DOT has designed for the Great Wagon Road construction in the near future.
Which, again, is going to be a DOT road, right?
No, and my understanding, it's what is currently there, and it will continue to be a town road.
That is correct. It's going to be built, maintained by the DOT for 12 months for the purposes of letting sort of like a guarantee of that to, you know, for maintenance. And then, once 12 months has elapsed, they're going to turn it back over to the town for the purposes of maintenance. It is our road, but the DOT is going to maintain it for the first year after the G W R is constructed.
Okay. Well, I'm glad we clarified that, but that tells me that at least it'll get plowed when the snow falls versus Shallowford Road.
Anything else, Mr. Franklin? Council members, anything else?
Mayor, this is Melissa Hunt. Stacy, thank you for your presentation, by the way, Stacy. In your presentation, you mentioned that the architect stated that it's two stories. What's your assessment of the two stories? Was that also your assessment? I just noticed that you, you stated the architect was the.
Right. It is signed and sealed by a licensed North Carolina architect, and he is stating that it is two stories. I don't have the licensure to say differently.
Okay, thank you.
Does that mean that if he certifies it, then he's held to that standard?
I would think so, yeah. I mean, like, generally, when a licensed engineer or surveyor architect puts their seal on the line, then, you know, that's, that's their seal that they are having to uphold with what they are, you know, stating, or, you know, when they have a plat or when they do work or something like that, their seal is kind of what is, you know, they're putting their, their stamp on it, like, that's what they stand by.
In, in more general terms, that me, that would mean that he would be putting his license in jeopardy if he were to, if he were to hold something to be accurate that was not, and knowingly did that.
Yes, sir. I would think so.
Thanks.
Good question. Go ahead, Melissa. Sure. And Stacy, your, your assessment from reviewing the U D O as a planner and a professional is that, that, that also is, is what you're basing, you're basing that recommendation off of the two stories that he did as a professional engineer? Is that correct, or?
Yes. Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Ms. Foster has a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Stacy, the, the section in which the two and a half stories is referenced, where is that?
It's in the downtown overlay under building height.
Okay. And correct, correct me if I'm wrong, that is a descriptor where it's talking about building height, and is it also in this, in that section where there's discussion around mass and scale and a reference to human and pedestrian scale?
Yes, that's also in the downtown overlay.
Okay. So two and a half stories could be referenced, at least to my, my interpretation, as a, an objective provision to help describe human scale and pedestrian scale.
I would agree, Jean Marie. I think the only thing that, that is about, the only objective thing that we have to go on in our ordinance currently, because building scale, mass, pedestrian friendliness is not defined.
Other than, there, contextually, the reference to two and a half stories helps to underscore what's meant by keeping the scale, et cetera, appropriate. So two and a half story goes hand in hand with.
Yes, ma'am. In other parts of town, in pedestrian business zoning, the maximum height is 60 feet. So the 48 feet and two and a half stories is meant to bring that down. So, so it would be different in the downtown rather than the 60 feet that would be allowed in other parts of town.
Thank you.
I guess I'm a little confused by the question. If someone could clarify the relevance of that for me?
Are you, are you talking to me, Dr. Sadler, Jean Marie?
Whoever can answer it, these, what I think I heard, and I may have misheard, was that two and a half stories has something to do with human scale? And I'm just trying to make sure that that's what I heard and that's what was intended or not.
That, yeah, and since I asked the question, it's, it's my read that the two and a half story is an objective descriptor for defining scale. And later on, human scale, I think pedestrian scale is referenced, but, but the building's mass, scale, et cetera, and they're also being referenced to two and a half stories, to my interpretation, that is a descriptor for the intent for scale and mass.
I understand that aspect. I don't understand how it relates to human scale as an objective measure.
I'm not sure how to answer your question. But perhaps we can talk about that during the discussion. I was asking Stacy if those were part of the, the downtown overlay or where, what, what the section was in the ordinance?
Well, let me ask Stacy that question. Is the, is it relevant, is a two and a half story reference relevant to human scale?
In our ordinance, it, it doesn't technically define human scale in the definitions chapter, but it does say that human scale, and then there's a parentheses, it's, it says, you know, how, how one is to feel when they're at close proximity to the building, not necessarily across the road or on the other end of town or something like that. That, that is what our ordinance defines human scale as. I would think that since, in the section where it talks about building mass and scale and pedestrian friendliness, we don't have anything specifically that states exactly what those measurements mean. I think the closest thing that we have to measuring one of those would be in building height, which, which the maximum is 48 feet and two and a half stories.
Well, someone made mention of another part of town where the requirement is 60 feet.
That is correct. And other parts outside of downtown, for, for the same zoning that this property has, someone would be allowed to build a building that is 60 feet tall instead of just 48 feet tall.
So do the same statements regarding human scale and so forth occur in relationship to that?
The only, the only place that our ordinance really talks about human scale is in the downtown overlay and other parks and the non-residential standards for other parts of town. It does not talk specifically about human scale.
Okay, thanks.
Council members? Anyone else?
I, yes, I have another question, unless we're going to ultimately open this up for discussion when we go for a vote. So I'm just looking to make sure I'm clear about process.
Yeah, I mean, I think ordinarily, Jean Marie, before anything is even discussed, you have to have a motion and a second.
Right.
You, you, of course, don't have to have a vote, but I think if we are through with asking Stacy questions, then we would need a motion and a second on this particular matter, either to approve or deny, and then we would open for discussion.
Right. So I'd like to ask one more question, Stacy, then.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. This, this has to do with the, this site having a multifamily component and a residential component. And the.
What do you mean, and a restaurant component?
Residential, meaning the RS20.
Oh, okay. I got you. I understand.
The property, right. So it's one site, but yet there are two very different components, right? So for the front part, or the, the Great Wagon Road facing part of the site, it is a multifamily use zoning. Is that fair? And part of the requirement for that, now, correct me if I'm not saying this right, is the egress, and I want to address the egress piece that you walked through before around why an exception was made to allow for the parking to be accessed, not through the multifamily part, which is a requirement, but rather through the North Street part of the site, which goes through the residentially zoned portion. So that's, I needed to just briefly.
There's, there's two, two kind of things with that. First and foremost is that the ordinance does say that it must travel through the multifamily site, but it does not say that it must originate through the multifamily site. And I think that council discussed that a little bit when the first rendition was before us. And then the second thing is for there to be a driveway cut. And then the second thing is for there to be a driveway cut in that block of the Great Wagon Road would be a non-conforming driveway cut, because it would not meet the distance requirements from other driveways or other, the intersection, if you will. And so, the ordinance asks us to take the the best management practice, if you will, for for driveway cuts. And since this particular site has an alternative opportunity to have their driveway cut elsewhere, being off of North Street, that is what the ordinance asks us to choose, instead of choosing somewhere where driveway cut would be non-conforming.
So, they that that, but to be clear, the ordinance says that we can choose to do that if it's a viable alternative, if it's determined to be a viable alternative, right? Okay. So, in your estimation, it was a viable alternative?
Right, because for the reason we have those distances from intersections is for safety reasons.
Right. But it with it being a residentially zoned piece of property.
Right, that's allowed in the ordinance because of it being for the multifamily use, you're allowed to have parking on an adjacent residential lot, as long as it abuts within for a distance of at minimum 25 feet. That's that's where why the parking is allowed to be on that site.
Right. I'm talking about the 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 egress. So, so your interpretation is that it doesn't have to originate? Say say that part again, where you said it doesn't have to originate, but...
Right, it is connected. You you will travel through the site in order to get to the parking underneath and the parking in the rear on the on the lot. But it doesn't say in the ordinance that it must originate through the multifamily site.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Stacy?
For the public, would you define what egress means, Stacy?
Ingress and egress means like pretty much interest and exit out through through the parking lot, where where you would enter into it, or where you would exit, just like ingress and egress of a building would be where you pass to go indoor or outdoor of the building.
So, an egress is a leaving from its place, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Council members, any other questions for Stacy?
Mayor, this is Councilman Smitherman. I have a statement.
David, at this point, we probably are questions for staff, but once we get a motion and a second to either approve or deny, then I think that's the opportunity for more council discussion. Is that okay with you?
No, it's a statement to to address a motion.
Oh, I see. Okay, I I apologize. I apologize. So, you're you're prepared to make a motion?
I am. I wrote it down so I can be straight with it.
Okay.
In reference to the Solomon Technical Review, originally, we've voted to deny this request based on two key factors, number of stories and overall height. The request was sent back to the planning board for review and resubmission. Mr. Zinger and his attorney reached out to the planning board and asked what options they should consider to make this a better fit for the town. No options were offered by the planning board, and the project was resubmitted to them, changing the stories to two and overall height to 48 feet. This was approved by the planning board, recommended by the town planner, and sent back to the council. As elected officials of the town of Louisville, sometimes we have to make hard decisions. It is imperative that we vote according to the process that is set in place and the requirements of the U D O. Therefore, I would like to make a motion to approve the application based on the information provided.
I'll second the motion.
Mr. Smitherman makes the motion, and Dr. Sadler makes the second. Council, now is the time for additional discussion among ourselves. Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
So, I I first of all, want to make a comment before I make additional more on point comments about the the project and the site. For the record, this is May 2021, and this project came before us after May of 2020. And I'll remind everyone, I don't need to remind everyone, this this has been during the global pandemic of COVID-19. And it has been extraordinarily difficult time for everyone, and it's been a very unique and unusual project. So, I just want to back all the way up, because at some point in time, all of this is just going to be on a piece of paper written, and I want to make sure the record reflects that we've been in a state of emergency for quite some time. This time last year, we were scrambling. We didn't even know what Zoom meant, much less it's now part of our vernacular, et cetera, et cetera. People have scrambled to do the right thing, to have good faith, to 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 move mountains, to try to make communication happen and meetings happen, and special meetings called, et cetera. So, I just want to acknowledge all of the effort and energy and attention that has gone through just trying to manage the governance of not just the town, but certainly this and many other projects. So, that's number one. My my comment has to do with the 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 fundamental that we are required to do, and that is for, under Chapter B, Article Two, Section Three dash one point six H D. For proposals requiring simply site plan review, but not rezoning or zoning map amendment, the planning board shall recommend approval, and the elected body shall approve any plans that meet all, not to, all requirements of this downtown overlay district and the U D O, and deny such requirements that do not meet the requirement. So, I appreciate, as I said, all the effort that went into this. It's been an extraordinary case with lots of moving parts. I appreciate the staff, the energy and attention that went into that. I don't agree with the assessment as it relates to parking. I don't agree with the assessment as it relates to, as I was saying, the egress and and in way that we are allowing for this to be, what what is it, Stacy, an alternate viable alternative? I don't think the intent of the U D O is to allow for a viable alternative for a residential property for parking and not meet the requirements of the other components of garbage, trash, and I think Mrs. Frye mentioned that she had sent some materials along those lines. So, the two and a half stories, to your point, Dr. Sadler, as I read and interpret the 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 requirements, I understand that the mass and scale is part of what it is that we are supposed to review, and my interpretation is that two and a half story was the intent to describe what the mass should be, especially in the downtown overlay. And then finally, as it relates to what I referenced with "we shall approve any plans that meet all requirements of the B T O and U D O, and deny any such requests that do not meet the requirements." One of the components that is in the U D O references roof pitch. And although it's referenced in another section of town, as I read, what we're supposed to be looking at for the technical review for compliance, there is an expectation that there will be a roof roof pitch within the U D O. So, the downtown overlay is an additional component, because this is a special place, but it still requires the technical review that we look at the entirety of the U D O. So, I'll pause there, because I could also underscore one of my rationales as being what Mrs. Frye called in about earlier. But I'm sure my other colleagues have something to say. Thanks.
Can I get a clarification, please, from our attorney, Mr. Huff? When we vote on this, if we vote in the no, that's when we give our reasons. Is that correct? Oh, you're you're...
Haven't done that in a while. I apologize. Yes, you'll need to, if there is a motion to deny, then that's going to need to include with it the reasons for denial, and a vote a a a vote that does, in fact, deny will need to have all four, you know, will have to have a majority vote on on at least one of those reasons for denial. So, in other words, if there were to be a denial, and there were four council people with four different reasons, A, B, C, and D, that would not be a sufficient denial. You need to have, so if if it were to be condition A, that's that everybody, that four people agrees, not met, that would be sufficient. But if four council members had four different reasons for denial, that would not, you need to have a majority to agree upon a reason for denial. That makes sense.
That's new information to us.
Yeah, absolutely. That's the first time we've heard that.
Yeah.
Well, we had not talked about that, but that, I mean...
Well, we we we've taken a previous vote, and this didn't come up.
Well, we had, we had...
I said, what is different from the previous vote, when it was denied, to this vote tonight? This was not, this has not been discussed with us both.
I understand. But I'm what I'm saying is, the last the last vote, I think everybody that voted against it was based on height, and the issue was denarrays. But I don't know that it's got, you know, we'll have to wait, just wait and let it let it flesh out and see how this goes, but...
So, again, Bo, you said when there's a motion for denial, where the motion is for approval. So, when I take, when I cast my vote, if I vote no, that is when I make the reasons why, correct?
No, no, ma'am. On the motion, on the motion to, there's a motion to approve. A simple vote no is sufficient to for for a, if your vote no is sufficient, that would be a determination about whether the motion to approve passes.
All right. So, this is the time, then, I can express some of my views, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Well, I'd like to take a moment and say why I am not in favor of this project being approved. Number one, under the comprehensive plan and the downtown design guidelines, it does not meet pedestrian scale. That's in Chapter B, Article Two. And that it's under definition of the two and a half stories. And the, you know, the four story is is was in previous. And then, under vision, it is not in line with the small town character. And under downtown overlay, it does not protect the unique character in urban design. Now, these last two may be interpreted as subjective, but I do think that they are very important and that they do influence what, you know, is approved or not. Number two, under the Unified Development Ordinance, number one, it is over the maximum height required of two and a half stories. That's in Article B, Article Two, two dash one point five six. And under the preferred land use map, it does not reflect the desire of the citizens to preserve the town's rural residential character as the predominant land use, a feature of the community. That's under Chapter B, Article Two. And it does not comply with the requirement of off-site parking for multifamily to be only through, and that's underlined, the multifamily site. And last, it does not meet the requirement to consider the most restrictive interpretations to prevail. And that's one dash seven point one and one dash seven point two.
Thank you, Ms. Welch. Council members, I want to be, I want to just back step for just a second. As I understood our attorney just now, the motion on the floor is to approve, and it has a second. We can vote to, we can vote yea on the motion, which is to approve, or we can vote no on the motion, which is not to approve. In this particular instance, we do not have to provide a reason for voting no. Is that correct, though?
It is.
Very good. Council members, any additional discussion?
Say that one more time.
Yeah, yeah, please clarify.
Without any reason.
Because of the way in which the motion was set up, is what you're saying.
Right. A motion to approve, you can vote against it and just say no, or you can vote yes. You don't have to provide a reason, because this is the motion, a motion to approve. If the motion to approve fails, then we're left with the next possible motion.
Sure, but the point of discussion at this time is to share views and positions, because that could or may impact the vote of individual council members, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Correct. Correct.
But when your vote is cast, it'll be a yes or no.
So, Bo, can you you clarify, if it's denied, and and it comes back as a denial, then at that point's when when we have to have an agreement as to why it's denied?
If, well, I hesitate to anticipate the motion, but if there is a motion to deny, the motion to deny should state the reasons for that motion. And then...
Bo, I'm I'm just, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I would say the motion to, if there is a, we're in a motion to approve, but if if this were to fail, then there if, and if there were a motion to deny, that motion should include with it the reasons for the motion to deny. And then...
But there does, but there does not necessarily need to be a motion to deny.
Well, if you have a motion, it, yeah, you, yes, because the the downtown overlay says you shall approve, and the council shall approve all all site plans that meet the requirements and shall deny all motions that don't. So, you would, you know, you would need to have a motion.
Okay, very good.
Mere failure of the approval, we're kind of limbo. We don't have any ruling at that point.
Gotcha. Council members, the question has been called on the motion to approve Resolution 2021021, the technical review, the approval for technical review compliance for the Solomon Development case. Ms. Foster, will you take the role, please? This is that you're if you're you're voting on the motion to approve?
The motion to approve. Mr., excuse me, Dr. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. Smitherman?
Aye.
Ms. Foster is a nay. Mr. Franklin?
No.
Ms. Welch?
No.
Ms. Hunt?
No.
Mayor?
No.
Mayor, would you like to wrap up?
I think that is a five to two of not approving the motion. So, council members, what we would need to do now, and I'm gonna, I'm going to just warn everyone, and if I have to run here, I will, but but in 15 minutes, I have to catch a plane. So, that's my timeframe, but don't let that hinder discussion on this. We we've, we now have the floor open for a motion to deny, as we're required to have.
So, move.
And this is the time when you would state the reasons, Ms. Welch.
Okay. And then I might ask also if the mayor would state after me, since he has to leave so soon. All right. My reasons were, number one, in the comprehensive plan...
Excuse me, Jane, Ms. Walker's making some motions. Ms. Walker's making motions.
I'm sorry, I, everybody was kind of talking, who actually made the motion to deny, and who was the second, please?
She's still stating her motion to deny, and it was Jane.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I thought it worked the other way.
Her motion, it'll have, it'll include the reasons with it.
Okay, thanks. And you probably already have them, Joyce, so I'll go through them a little quickly again. Number one, in the comprehensive plan and the downtown design guidelines, it is not pedestrian scale, Chapter B, Article Two. Under vision, it is not in line with small town character, and it, under the downtown overlay, does not protect the unique character in urban design. Number two, under the Unified Development Ordinance, one, it's over the maximum height required of two and a half stories, Chapter B, Article Two. And number two, under that, under preferred land use map, it does not reflect the desire of the citizens to preserve the town's rural residential nature as a predominant land use feature of the community, Chapter B, Article Two. And then does not comply with the requirement of off-site parking for multifamily to be only through the multifamily site. And last, it does not meet the requirement to consider most of the restrictive interpretations to prevail, one dash seven point one, one dash seven point two.
There's a motion on the floor to deny. Is there a second?
I'll second that. If I might ask for an amendment, Jane?
Okay.
I'd also like to include that I really don't think, or that the that I do not think it meets the parking requirements as far as the allocated spaces are concerned, because I do not... as far as the allocated spaces are concerned, because I do not believe it has been approved to include those calculations by either the elected body or the North Carolina DOT specifically in writing at this point in time. And those are critical to finding the technical review of this as a compliance. So anyhow, I'd like to add that to your motion, and with that, I will second it.
I accept that.
Very good, there's a motion, there's a motion and amended motion and a second. And any, any, any further discussion on this at this point?
I'm a little confused.
Ms. Foster?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Just, just for clarification, because I think I heard the attorney say something about what the process should be for all those who were voting to deny. I just want to be, make sure that I'm clear about what, what will follow now, if, if folks vote no.
Well, if, if there's a no vote on this motion, you won't need any reason, because that's effectively a motion to approve it. For those who are voting yes, and if they dis, if they disagree with one or more of the reasons that Ms. Welch and Mr. Franklin have stated, then they should make that known, otherwise, a yes motion, I mean, a yes vote on this motion is a agrees with the motion in its totality, including all the reasons against it. But though, anyone who votes no on this motion doesn't have to state a reason.
All right, thank you.
All right, so for clarity, Bo, the council has already voted no with the motion for approval. So now we are left with just, it seems, those who are voting for this motion of not to be approved, they're the only ones that have to state why, is that correct?
No, and we're, right now, you have a motion that you made and stated your reasons, and then Mr. Franklin added one or two additional reasons and asked to, you to amend your motion, which you did, and so that's been seconded. And so anyone, if you vote yes, you're voting that you agree with the reasons stated in your motion, as amended, to deny. Everybody votes, because it's a motion of, it's a motion being voted on by town council, everybody votes.
Got it.
But at this point in time, it's simply straight up yes or no, right?
A yes, yes, or a yes vote includes the reasons that were stated in the motion.
Right.
Right.
I would follow the question and, so the mayor gets an opportunity to vote for it, to ask, catch that play.
Thank you. Very good, Ms. Foster, if you will go ahead and.
Sure, Mr. Franklin?
I, I'm gonna vote yes, on this motion.
All right, Ms. Welch?
Yes.
Ms. Hunt?
Aye.
Ms., Dr. Sadler?
No.
Mr. Smitherson?
No.
Ms. Foster is yes, Mr. Horn, Mayor Horn?
Yes.
Okay, so would you like to take that from here?
Certainly, I think at this particular point, the motion passes by five to two with Mr. Smitherson and Dr. Sadler voting in opposition.
Correct.
Okay. Very good. Folks, moving on to unfinished business, and I do apologize again, folks, I would not, I would not be leaving a meeting, this meeting, if it wasn't critical, that I'd be on the slide. Hank, you will go into the ordinance on junk abandoned and hazard, hazardous motor vehicles. You have the, you have the changes that you and I discussed to, to hold with council. Council members, I do want to read one thing before I go. We will talk about what we can do based upon what general statutes say, and we will talk about what we can do. Let me just pull up, I'm sorry, folks, let me just pull up this last thing. Okay. Just, I apologize, folks, I've got, I've got lots of papers everywhere.
No, no need to apologize.
While Mike's hunting for that, I'm gonna give you a heads up, I've got, now, that's not where it's supposed to be, and they're all riled up, I've got to size up the situation, so here in a moment, I'm gonna have to break away, okay?
Of course, I will, I will.
Just for information, if you, if you voluntarily leave, and I know, Mr. Horn, you're not completely voluntary in that sense, nor are you, Mr. Franklin either, but votes that are taken will be yes votes while you're gone.
That's, that's fine, and I, but I think I had some changes that I wanted to suggest. Hank, you have those changes, do you feel? Do you, do you feel comfortable going over those changes?
Hank, you're muted.
Muted. Mayor, I've got a, a comment on the change to four and fitted cover. And what else?
The reduction of the seven day waiting period to twenty-four hours.
Okay, I've got that for discussion.
Yep, and Bo, under, you and I had talked about the, the, the language in one sixty A, and that was that last paragraph that specifically said, that specifically said, that specifically said, very good, this is in one sixty A dash one seven four. We, Hank and I had a very spirited and good discussion about what we can do in an ordinance and what we can't do in an ordinance. My contention is that we can make this ordinance as tough as we would like to make it, regardless of what general statutes are, because in number, the, the last sentence in one sixty A dash one seventy-four states this, the fact that a state or federal law, standing alone, makes a given act omission or coordinate, or condition unlawful, shall not preclude the city ordinance requiring a higher standard of conduct. So you may discuss tonight what the general statutes require, but let me remind you, and Bo, you, you and I've had a conversation on this too, that the town of Louisville can require higher standards of conduct, should we wish. And folks, I'm sorry, with that, I've got to run. I hope you'll, I hope you'll do, I hope you'll do the right thing, not the right thing, I hope you will reconsider making this ordinance as tough as we possibly can.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Folks, thanks again for indulging me, I know it's been a little difficult, and I've made it that way, but hopefully that hasn't been too disruptive for the meeting tonight. With that, Ms. Foster, the meeting's yours.
Safe travels.
Mayor, safe travels.
Go ahead, seven twenty-five, mayor, for the record, had to. All right, so Mr. Franklin is gone and he'll be coming back, I'll let you look for that, Bo. So Hank, I think it's yours, this, let's just for the, for the public, tell everyone where we are.
Okay.
With the item number.
Let's see, right now, we are considering ordinance two zero two zero, two zero two one zero two two of Louisville Town Council, amending chapter seventeen, removal and disposition of abandoned nuisance and motor junk vehicles of Louisville Town Code and renaming chapter seventeen as prohibiting abandoned hazardous and junk motor vehicles. I'll go ahead and share my screen with everyone. If I can find it, let's see where it is here. All right, and then I need to switch this. Okay. I had sent you guys the copy of this ordinance as, as we previously discussed, and in here, we've made one additional change. In, in the yellow at the top there, you're going to see the addition of the general statutes that have to do with authorizing this type of ordinance to be, to be, I guess, come up with and adopted by the town council. The paragraph that you have above that, that whereas, references one sixty A, one seventy-four, that was the general statute that the mayor referenced. And then as we move down, and I'm just going to cover what we did.
And Hank, excuse me, when you get to where you want to get to, could you just in, increase the size, please? Between the yellow and the red, it's harder to see.
Okay.
Less age, that's a thing, too.
All right. And then we amend, and that's what section three is, talking about the changes to the, to the code from the other code. Here's the intent, the intent of this chapter is to promote, enhance the aesthetic appearance of the town, to protect the property values throughout the town, and opportunities for economic development of the town. It is further the intent of this chapter to promote, enhance the attractiveness of the town thoroughfares and residential streets, which present, present public visibility to visitors and to passersby of the town by controlling, regulating abandoned hazardous and junk vehicles. Then we get into the, the definitions. These definitions, as I spelled out in the documents that we, that I sent to you earlier, you see the general statute reference in abandoned vehicle one sixty A three oh three. This is what, if, if you remember from looking at what I sent you, this definition of abandoned vehicle is verbatim to what you will find when you look at general statute one sixty A three oh three. When you get down to the next sections here, the definition, of course, and as I go through it, has been left upon a street or highway in violation of the law in accordance with prohibited parking, is left on property owned or operated by the town for longer than twenty-four hours, or is left on private property without the consent of the owner, occupant, or leasing thereof longer than two hours, or is left on the public street or highway for longer than seven days, or is determined by the law, by law enforcement to be a hazard to the motor in public. That entire definition is straight out of general statute, and that's, that's what point I'll make on it. The approved motor vehicle cover, this is one thing that the mayor and I did discuss, he would like to make a change to this, and I see no reason why not to do this, if council wants to approve it, the change. He would, wanted to read a, for approved motor vehicle cover, a ready fit cover made expressly for motor vehicles which will resist decay, mildew, and ultraviolet sunlight. And then he wanted the words, or a well-secured tarp. So that doesn't put an undue burden on someone to go through an ex, extra expense to be able to go through a store or some other mechanism to spend money on a, on a cover that could cost a fair amount of money, depending on what you get. The authorizing official is defined, any precise county sheriff's deputy, officer on duty that day, the town manager, or his, his or her designate are designated to authorize the removal of vehicles under the provision of this chapter. Hazardous vehicle, it used to be nuisance vehicle. The hazardous vehicle is covered underneath the provision, I believe that's going to be one sixty A one nine three. This is the same general statute that allows us to, to adopt basically nuisance and unkept, kept lots ordinances. This is different from the other, because this basically is a vehicle that is put in such a way that it's you know, collecting water, or it's got heavy growth of weeds around it, or it's going to have a lot of qualit, quali, quantities of gasoline or other flammable or explosive materials. It's basically a situation where it is, is, we're trying to address a public safety or a public health concern. When you get down to junk motor vehicle, this is again, is defined in one sixty A three, three zero three point two for junk motor vehicle. This definition is essentially verbatim out of the general statute. The only thing that's different from this is that in the general statute, the default says, for number three, that the value is worth less than one hundred dollars, but then the general statute does expressly allow for the town to increase that one hundred dollars to five hundred dollars, as long as it puts it in an ordinance like this. Moving forward to motor vehicle or vehicle, all machines designated or intended to travel over land by self-propulsion or while attached to any self-propelled vehicle, again, this definition's straight out of general statute, word for word. Jurisdiction is going to be inside the corporate limits of the town of Louisville. It gets to into administration. This reads essentially similar to, or, or essentially the same as our current chapter seventeen reads. The Forsyth County Sheriff's Office, the town manager, or his or her designate, shall be responsible for the administration enforcement's chapter. The Forsyth County Sheriff's Office shall be responsible for administering the removal and disposition of vehicles determined to be abandoned, hazardous, or junked on the street, on public streets, and highways within the municipality and on property owned by the municipality. Our current ordinance, as it reads, is essentially the same thing and has read the same way for years. Nothing in this ordinance shall be construed to limit the authority of the powers of the, and powers of officers of the Forsyth County Sheriff's Office in enforcing other laws or otherwise carrying out their duties. B, the town manager, or his or her designate, shall be responsible for administering the removal and disposition of abandoned hazardous or junk motor vehicles located on private property. So you see that, if it's on public property, on town property, that's the sheriffs, the sheriff deputies' offices are doing that. If it's on private property, it's, it's the town manager or their designate. Now, if you get down into this, it talks about the abandoned vehicle unlawful, removal authorized, and this is upon investigation, the proper authorized official of the town pursuant to section seventeen point four. When you see any language like this for abandoned motor vehicles, what you end up having to do is determine where that abandoned motor vehicle is, is it on private property, or is it on public property, or, or rights away, that authorized official pursuant to seventeen point four tells you where is it, and then that is whether or not it's the town manager or his or her designate, or the sheriff's office. It shall be unlawful for any registered owner or person entitled to the possession of motor vehicle or for the owner, leasing, or occupant of the real property upon which the vehicle is located to leave, cause, or allow the motor vehicle to become or an abandoned motor vehicle. Hazardous vehicle unlawful removal, removal authorized. This A is identical to what we talked about up in section eight of seventeen point five, and then the same language for B. When you move down to section ten, seventeen point seven, junk vehicle, vehicle regulator removal authorized, again, the same thing for A, and then under, under B, subject to provisions of seventeen seven A of this section upon investigation. The authorized official of the town, that's, depending on where it is, town manager, or his or her designate, or the sheriff's office, may order the removal of a junk motor vehicle as defined in this ordinance from private property to a storage garage or storage area after finding in writing that the aesthetic benefits of removing the vehicle outweigh the burdens imposed on the private property owner. Such findings shall be based on the balancing of the monetary loss of the apparent owner against the corresponding gain to the public by promoting or enhancing community, neighborhood, or area appearance. The following shall apply, and then you've got those, those five different things from, won't read them all, from protecting, the protection of property values, all the way down to promotion of comfort, happiness, and emotional stability of the residents. That is key, that language comes out of general statutes as well. If I, or anyone, or the sheriff's office said, well, it would be on private property, so it would be the, the town manager, his or designate, orders a junk vehicle to be removed from private property, that person has to state in writing this, the aesthetic benefits of removing the vehicle outweigh the burdens imposed on private property owner. That is key to the ability of the person that may feel like they are due a, an appeal to come back and make that appeal before the town of Louisville. I'll skip ahead a little bit for you, we have changed that to the zoning board of adjustment, as we talked about from last week, instead of the town council to do that. Under permitted concealment or enclosure of the, of the junk motor vehicle, we talk about one junk motor vehicle or its entirety may locate, be located in the rear yard as defined in the town of Louisville's unified development ordinance, provided the junk motor vehicle is clearly concealed from public view from the public street or abutting premises by an approved motor vehicle cover. And then the authorized official And then the authorized official of the town pursuant to 174 has the authority to determine whether any junk motor vehicle is adequately concealed as required by this provision. The covering must remain in good repair and not be deteriorated. The cover or enclosure may be compatible with the objectives stated in 17.1 of this ordinance. Any additional motor vehicle shall be kept within a garage or similar structure that provides a complete enclosure so that the junk motor vehicle cannot be seen from public streets or abutting property. Garages or similar structures mean either lawful, non-conforming use or other struc, or, or other structure erected pursuant to the lawfully issuance of a building permit and which has been constructed in accordance with all zoning and building code regulations. All of this language here is in general statute. You can have one car, but if you cannot see that, that junk vehicle because it's been concealed in a garage, there's nothing, no harm, no foul. You can keep as many on that property as you care, care to, as long as they are kept under roof as described in, in number two here. Removal of abandoned hazardous and junk motor vehicles pre-towing requirements. The pre-towing requirements are spelled out in general statute. It talks about how we, we identify the abandoned hazardous vehicle to be removed shall be towed only after the notice to register vehicles. I won't go into a lot of this because it's, I mean, it's there before your face. You've been able to, to read it yourself. It also allows for this to, it talks about reasonable diligence shall include notification, registered owners of the vehicle at the last known address according to the latest registration certificate or certificate of title on file with the North Carolina DMV. Notice to the owner of the real property is a court, recorded in the Forsyth County tax office. Notice to the owner leasing or occupant, the person who mails the notice shall retain the written record or show the names and addresses to which mailed and the date mailed. If the names and addresses cannot be ascertained, or if the vehicle is to be removed, is an abandoned motor vehicle, notice shall be given by a fixing, this is something straight out of general statute as well, a fixing on the windshield or some other conspicuous place on the vehicle, a notice indicating that the vehicle will be removed by the town on a specific date, no sooner than seven days after the, the notice is affixed. The notice shall state that the vehicle will be removed by the municipality on the specified date, no sooner than seven days after the notice is affixed or mailed unless the vehicle is, is moved by the owner or legal possessor of, possessor prior to that time. That seven days is exactly in the general statute for it, for it. So an abandoned vehicle is only abandoned after it's been sitting there for seven days. Then when you tag it in this fashion, you can't tow it. You have to say when you're going to tow it, and then you can't tow it in any less than seven days after you've tagged the vehicle. That's spelled out of general statute. Now, in fairness to Mayor Horn, Mayor Horn wanted that no sooner than seven days to be 24 hours because of the, the reasons that he stated before he left the meeting. I disagree with that interpretation for, that the mayor came up with. I believe that because the general statutes define this, these authorities, so, so specifically it needs to be seven days. But I will let Bo and, and anyone have some conversation about that provision. I'm sure we need to have that conversation before we leave this ordinance. And then we get into the appeal process, the registered owner or person entitled to possession of the vehicle, which has been determined to be abandoned vehicle on private property, hazardous vehicle, or other junk motor vehicle who has received notice pursuant to 17.8, that the vehicle will be removed, may appeal that determination. Any appeal shall be made within 10 days upon receipt of the notice for, for removal of vehicle provided in 17.8. All appeals shall be made to the town, the zoning board of adjustment in writing. Appeals held pursuant to this section shall be conducted by the zoning board of adjustment within 45 days of the receipt of the request for the hearing and further proceedings to remove the vehicle shall be stayed until the appeal is heard and decided. Now, the whole reason for having a, a reason to appeal it goes back to that, that aesthetic quality that I talked about earlier. If I or someone says that there is a benefit to the community for having the vehicle towed, someone else is going to be appealing it saying, I disagree. And then you end up having your appeal come before the zoning board of adjustment. Did I hear someone have a question?
I did, please, Mr. Perkins. For clarification, if somebody wants to appeal, are they still required to move, remove that vehicle?
No, because it says right here that within 45 days after the receipt of the request for hearing and further proceedings to remove the vehicle shall be stayed until the appeal is heard and decided. So if I, if I or anybody has said this, this vehicle is going to be towed, and here's the day it's going to be towed, if they come in here and they appeal it in enough time, then that, that vehicle does not move until this appeal is heard.
At the board of adjustments?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so that could be 45 days sitting there.
It, it could end up being that long. If I, Bo, would you agree with that assessment?
Yeah, I would agree with that and to, well, I'll be ready to speak to that, to the issue that Mayor Horn raised at the appropriate time, probably after you're done with the rest of it.
Okay.
And Hank, this is, this is Melissa, just for clarification as to what changes, the question that she brought up, the 45 days, how often does zoning board of adjustment meet?
Monthly.
Okay, so it would be within probably, you know, if they wanted an appeal, they could get on the schedule or on the agenda potentially.
I would imagine that the matter would be heard, you know, unless the, unless the appeal was taken the day before the board of adjustment was scheduled to meet.
Sure.
I would imagine if it was, you know, within the week or so beforehand, we could probably get that matter off the hearing.
Thank you.
Okay.
And let me say, well, there's one other thing, I guess, the 40, the state of the proceedings, these are for situations where there's not danger to the public as defined above. So, you know, the, the sheriff or the town, if there is a vehicle within a dangerous location, like part of it is sticking onto the roadway, for example, that would, that's a, that's a different setting. That, in that case, it's going to be removed immediately. But if we're talking about, as, as Mr. Perkins said, the aesthetic issues, then that's, that's why we have to give rise, we have to allow for an appeal.
Right, and that's in the next section that we'll come to, 17.9, exceptions to prior notice. And this says the requirement for notice, notice be given or prior to the removal of the, of the abandoned hazardous or junk motor vehicle may, as determined by the authorizing official, be omitted in the circumstances where the special need for prompted action to eliminate traffic obstructions or to otherwise maintain and protect the public welfare, the public safety and welfare. Such findings shall in all cases be entered by the authorizing, authorized official in appropriate written records. So that's getting back to what Bo had talked about. There is, if it's, if it's causing an issue or it's a dangerous situation, we can go ahead and get the vehicle removed without the, the prior notice requirement having to be upheld for it. And then it gets, of course, it gets into the circumstances justifying the removal of vehicles without prior notice to include, these will be vehicles abandoned on public streets, or vehicles left on public streets and highways, the authorized official of the town pursuant to 17.4, hereby determines that immediate removal of such vehicles may be warranted when they are. We get into these six areas, obstructing traffic, parking, and violation of an ordinance prohibiting or restricting parking, parked in a no-stopping or standing zone, parked in a loading zone, parked in a bus, in bus zones, or parked in violation of temporary parking restrictions imposed under any town ordinance. Other abandoned and hazardous vehicles, I'm trying to see if, I don't want to read the thing to you. This is another circumstance where vehicles may be removed without giving prior notice in those circumstances where the authorized official finds a special need for prompt action to protect and maintain the public health, safety, or welfare. By way of illustration and not limitation, these such circumstances include vehicles blocking or obstructing ingress or egress of businesses and residence, vehicles parked in such a location or manner as to pose a traffic hazard, or vehicles causing damage to public or private property. This talks a little bit about vehicles left on private property. You may have remembered that there was a provision for an abandoned vehicle to be on private property if it's been left on private property without the consent of the property owner for two hours. This next section talks a little bit about that. Vehicles left on private property, a vehicle may be removed that has been left on private property without the consent of the owner, occupant, leasing for longer than two hours, and owner of occupant or leasing has complied with 17.9 of this ordinance, or in those circumstances where there is a finding of a special need for prompt action to eliminate obstructions or to otherwise maintain the public, protect the public safety and welfare, such findings shall in all cases be entered by the authorized official in appropriate written records. This gets into pretty much post-towing requirements. The, the car has been done. You have to keep a description of the vehicle, the place where it was towed, and also the violation for which the owner was charged, if any, in the procedure the owner must follow to have the vehicle returned to him. In the procedure, the owner must follow to request a probable cause hearing on the towing. The town shall attempt to give, give notice to the vehicle owner by telephone. However, whether or not the owner is reached by telephone, written notice, including the information set forth in 17.10A above, shall be mailed to the registered owner's last known address unless the notice is waived in writing by the vehicle owner or his agents.
I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Yes, ma'am.
While I'm thinking of it, will also a renter be notified at the same time?
On a post-towing notification?
Or anything pursuant to this ordinance?
I, I think, well, I think a renter may be done on a post-towing. There was some talk about occupant of a piece of property for it on the post-towing, or the, the pre-towing, not post-towing. But I think on this side, that it was the owner of the registered vehicle that would be kind of notified, this is, your car was taken and for why, and this is where it was and for what reason. The last D part talks about if there's no valid registration or registration, registration plates, the authorized town official shall make responsible efforts, including checking the vehicle identification number to determine the last known registered owner of the vehicle and notify him or her of the information set forth in 17.10A above. And I think, Bo, if you, I don't want to do it any unjust, this is, this last part talks about the owner's rights of the vehicle as it relates to the vehicle before it could be disposed of by a towing company. Am I accurate on that, Bo?
Well, yeah, you're talking about the section 15?
14 and 15 and 16 on that way. The car's already in the possession of a tow operator.
Right, and this is, this is the procedure for getting, getting the car back?
Right. And at this point, they, there's some provisions of, we talk about a request for hearing must be filed in writing with the county magistrate designated by the chief district court judge, but all of this is after we are kind of taking care of it and the car is gone. This is the registered owner of the vehicle and what they do to claim return of this vehicle before it is disposed of by sale or disposition of the unplanned vehicle.
And you'll see that reference to the statutes, that, that's why we're following that procedure because there's one established by going to a magistrate.
Right. The last part two, or one of it, this is certainly not the last in here, it talks about the conditions on removal of vehicle from private property. Except as provided in 17.10B as a general policy, the town will not remove a vehicle from private property if the owner, occupant, or leasing of such property could have the vehicle removed under the applicable state laws. In no case will the vehicle be removed by the town from private property without a written request of, of the owner, occupant, or leasing, except in those cases where the vehicle is a hazardous vehicle or a junk motor vehicle which has been ordered to remove by the authorized official of the town pursuant to section 17.4 pursuant to section 17.10B. I think there might be a typo on there that Joyce needs to look at, at least just on grammar.
I think that's right.
Yeah, you think that's right, Bo?
Yeah, I do.
Okay. The town shall require any person requesting removal of an abandoned hazardous or junk motor vehicle from private property to indemnify the town against any loss, expense, or liability incurred because of the removal, storage, or sale thereof. Last part, I hate to use the term legalese, but that's what we're talking about from the protection against criminal and civil liability. And then the exceptions, nothing, nothing in this ordinance shall apply to any vehicle which meets the following. The vehicle is located in a bona fide automobile graveyard, so if it's in a, a bona fide automobile graveyard, it doesn't count by any of these things because it's in line with a business being operated and not something that's on a residential piece of property on public rights away. And then it also doesn't count if it's covered in the rear yard, or the vehicle is on a premise of a business enterprise being operated in a lawful place or manner, if the vehicle is necessary to the operation of the enterprise. The vehicle is an appropriate storage place or depository main, maintained by a lawful place or manner by the municipality. The motor vehicle is used or on a regular basis for business or personal use. And then unlawful removal of the impounded vehicle. This is somebody that tries to go and get their car back without going through the proper procedures. And then, of course, severability. And then the last part of it is about repeal and re, and reenactment of existing removal and disposition of abandoned nuisance and junk motor vehicles ordinance by the town. And then last, the intent of, it is the intent of the Lewisville Town Council, that the provisions of this ordinance shall be made a part of the town of Lewisville's town code, that the sections of this ordinance may be renumbered or relettered, and the word ordinance be, may be changed to section, article, chapter, or other appropriate designation to accomplish such intention. And that's it. Bo, I'm going to let you come back to the discussion of what the mayor was referring to before he had to leave us.
Yeah, a few days ago, I guess maybe, it might have been before the end of last week, I can't recall, the mayor sent to Hank and me a, a copy of this 160A-174, which is the general authorization for towns and cities to make ordinances. And it contains in subsection A, it has the general authority, and then in subsection B, it has a requirement that, well, there it is. And in subsection B, it says, any ordinance that the town, a town may pass has to be consistent, or cannot be inconsistent with state or federal laws. And then it goes, has a whole list of things that make it not consistent with state or federal law. The one that's probably most important here is B2, the ordinance make, makes unlawful an act of mission or condition which is expressly made lawful by state or federal law. But the reality of, of this one, the last sentence is the one that, that the mayor was looking to in order to have a more stringent abandoned vehicles definition. And it says, the fact that a state or federal law standing alone makes a given act, a mission or condition unlawful shall not preclude city ordinances requiring a higher standard of conduct or condition. First thing is, I didn't find any cases that actually interpreted that, that provision. But even independent of that, the, the statutory basis from which we got our definition, from which many, many municipalities in the state get their definition of abandoned vehicles, is from a general statute. It's 160A-303. And that is the one that is contained within our, within, within the ordinance that you're considering. It says, the relevant portion of it says, an abandoned motor vehicle is one that is the definition of an abandoned motor vehicle. And it says it's one that's left on any public street or highway for longer than seven days, or is determined by law enforcement to be a hazard to the motoring public. This is different than- This is different than, um, I think, the situation that's contemplated in that in that highlighted section of of section one seventy four. This is the definition. This tells you whether a vehicle, whether a vehicle is an abandoned vehicle or not. And that, uh, and and when you look at that section three oh three, that's the authorizing statute that says towns may make these kinds of ordinances. Um, and of course, as you're aware from your, you know, initiation into uh municipal government, that towns can only act when they have been given express authority by the state legislature. Section three oh three is the statute that gives the town the right to deal with abandoned and abandoned and junk uh motor vehicles. And it defines them. And um in this particular case, what we're talking about is a definition of an abandoned motor vehicle. And the definition is one that means a vehicle has been left on public property for seven days. I don't believe that the town can alter the definition of an abandoned motor vehicle. And so that's why I don't believe that the position that the mayor was taking was correct. And I regret that he's not here to be able to hear it because I'd rather have him here to defend himself because he and I did not get to have the in-person discussion about this. But that is my view. I uh, it is the view apparently of any number I looked at Raleigh's similar ordinance, Durham's similar ordinance, Alamance County's ordinance, I think it was either Henderson County, Henderson or Hendersonville. They all had that same one because the state, the state law only allows you to do what it says you can do, which is to say, remove abandoned motor vehicles. And an abandoned motor vehicle means it has to have been there for seven days. So that's that's on this ordinance. There may be another mechanism for dealing with a twenty-four hour or less situation. And that would be by um, you know, dealing, working with the DOT and having a no parking sign, tow away zone uh sign posted um at locations where you're particularly concerned about uh parking uh not not going for seven days. And and in matter of fact, you'll see that referenced in other places in this ordinance that you're that's under consideration, at least one or two other places where it says, you don't have to have this uh prenotice tagging and all this requirement under certain circumstances. And one of those is when you've got it posted, no parking zone. You can you can remove it, just like some places, they put the boots on the vehicles. You know, you don't wait for days, you put the boot on it when it, when it's, when it's uh, you know, been there beyond the amount, beyond the allowed amount of time. But anyway, that's not this ordinance. That would be requires to look at our parking ordinance, which is chapter forty-five of the town code.
Thanks.
Yeah, so I have a couple of questions. Um, in a few places that took this particular ordinance, um, referenced another ordinance called prohibiting parking. Is that an ordinance that the town currently has, uh, a ordinance to prohibit parking?
We do have a part, yes, ma'am, we do have a parking ordinance is chapter forty-five. It um, it doesn't have a whole lot to it, but it does, it it is chapter forty-five. And I would, you know, that that would be the provision that's being referred to. But we'd have to go and look at for chapter forty-five more right now than the main one. And Sergeant Stringers, you know, knows this one. It the 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 only one that we really look at very often is where we've got parking on the street that is obstructing traffic. And we and we deal with folks that are doing that. We don't have a whole lot, to my knowledge, I think we maybe have a few places, but not many places where we have no parking signs.
Okay.
Also, the understand that um, my understanding DOT is the one that regulates uh on DOT roads. They are the only ones that can actually post no parking uh signs.
Thank you for that, Sergeant Stringer. There is actually, there's two situations. If you have prohibited parking, then it's the DOT that posts the signs there. In all situations, if it's on public roads, DOT has to be advised about the the regulation, the ordinance. But if it's a prohibition saying you may not ever park here, then that in that circumstances, I read that uh that manual uh that if it's a you never park here, then the DOT posts the signs. If it is no parking, let's say after five o'clock or no parking at certain times, then then I my, it's my understanding that the municipality is responsible for posting the sign, even on a DOT road.
Okay, and I have a follow up, um, just.
So Mr. Franklin, are you back?
He is.
Okay, eight oh two, thank you, sorry, Melissa.
It's actually, it was before eight oh two, I think it was, what, when did you get back, about ten till?
I've been back a while. I heard the most of this discussion.
Good, thanks.
Been off and on, I finally got the cow back to the right place.
On the record, thank you.
So we had some pretty lengthy presentation. Thank you, Hank, regarding this particular ordinance and Bo. Since mayor was the individual that proposed this and kind of started the conversation, is there a reason why we are needing to push a vote on this this evening? Or is this something that we can continue on um in our June briefing and our June um meeting? So that we can hear his positioning? Hank or 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 Jenny going to say something?
Yes, if I may, um, say I had a question. If this ordinance is approved this evening, and then I assume it would be effective tomorrow. Sergeant Stringer, first of all, thank you for hanging in there with us for this tonight. Would you be able to act immediately on the ordinance?
Um, once, once you guys uh actually approve it, then what I what I'll do is I'll send it to the uh the sheriff's office to run it through the county attorney to make sure there's no, there's not any change in our policy or our daily orders. So it shouldn't take long, but uh I I would, I would certainly.
Yeah, um, Sergeant Stringer, if you're gonna do that, probably what I would want, I would like you to do is to run that through your office and the county attorney prior to the town council adopting the ordinance. So that we can have the benefit of any changes that the county attorney or your command staff would want to have in there made to it. Keep in mind, and you keep them in mind, is our current ordinance is it's it's written also involves the our community policing program in much the same way the proposed ordinance does.
Yeah.
Okay.
So um, Mr. Perkins, in that case, it sounds like we won't be voting on it tonight. We can hear what the, what's if you don't, if you, if you would.
Well, uh, I wasn't aware that the sergeant would want to do that. You know, as far as having it run by the, especially the county attorney's office. I know Bo has talked to the county attorney, there, there can be lots of consideration coming out of that office. I would hate for the town council to take action on a brand new ordinance just to have um consultation with the county officials. Cause us to have requested changes to this ordinance that could be could be fairly lengthy.
I'm not, I'm not trying to throw a wrench and everything. I'd I'd just rather have a uh, make sure that we're all on the same page before it goes forward, but.
Yeah, how long would that take, Sergeant Stringer, would you, in your opinion?
A week or so, maybe.
So then back to the question of the mayor not being here. How difficult, Mr. Perkins, would it be to make an amendment? So we could pass an ordinance so we can get some things done in the town? And then if we needed to make an amendment, would that be difficult?
Well, I'd like everybody to keep in mind, we already have a chapter seventeen that deals with these vehicles in lots of ways. It 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 reads very similarly to what we've done. This ordinance uh creates um I guess some definition and some clarity to the ordinance a little bit more than the current of abandoned and junk vehicles, nuisance vehicles does. But it, we already have an ordinance that reads the same way, where the sheriff's office deals with what is on the public property and where the town manager or his or her designate deals with private property. So I don't think we are going without an ordinance. We just would be considering the uh, I guess, considering this ordinance until we have uh that looked at by by Sergeant Stringer and his people.
This is an amended ordinance, as I understand it in the title of the document, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you.
And the amended part is exactly that. We, what you've seen that the Joyce has done is highlighted how this is different from our current ordinance. So just keep in, keep in in mind that we already have a chapter seventeen that deals with the same issues. This may streamline it and improve it, but we still have an issue, a an ordinance in place. I would also say that I'm in the process, the town doesn't currently have a towing operation that we're under contract with. So I do have a company that I'm working out so that in the event that the town has vehicles that it is going to be ordered to remove pursuant to the portions that we're responsible for, for the town of Louisville, we'll end up having a towing um company that will come in and handle that towing for the town. And then I I imagine we could have the same thing, but I know that the sheriff's office probably already has a towing off, a towing company that works with the sheriff. If they are dealing with a a vehicle that is out on public right of way anyway.
That's what I was gonna, my next point was gonna be, if you're really not falling back on the ordinance, if the sheriff's office currently, if we have a vehicle that's blocking a moving lane of traffic, somebody's left abandoned sitting in the middle of the highway, then we'll, we'll call the next out or or uh the wrecker company that the uh, the sheriff's office has set up. So that's not gonna, that's not gonna hinder anything being done if if we have a a situation where a car is broken down or abandoned uh until.
But Sergeant Stringer, I would, correct me if I'm wrong, is that if we're dealing in the public right of way, we have an existing ordinance naming the community policing office, you probably already have a towing company that can work with you anyway, under the current ordinance.
Well, ti- yes, we we do. But like I said, it's typically whenever that that uh come where that vehicle's blocking that moving lane and it has to be acted upon at that at that time.
Okay.
So so in summary, so the reason it was put on the, this this item was put on the agenda for tonight was because there was an intent, I understood, that that we were trying to get this ordinance passed and on the books.
Well, uh, you know, the reason for wanting to do this is not necessarily for for feeling that we need to rush it to completion, for instance. But if there is a feeling that the ordinance is ready to go, there is no need to prolong it any longer.
Right.
So I certainly would think that if Sergeant Stringer thinks that it is worthy of having county attorney and their and other officials within sheriff's office examine it, I think there's enough time for that to happen so that we can incorporate or deal with any concerns that they they may have. I will say that um, and I think that Sergeant Stringer already owns, knows this. This this uh ordinance that we have is almost identical to one that the village of Clemens has already adopted as well. So I would assume that the village has already had their own community policing staff look into it on behalf of the village. I may be mistaken, they may have just passed it without having that consideration given to them by by the sheriff's office of the county.
I I don't, I can't say for sure if they looked at it or not, uh, Mr. Perkins, I I don't know. I just simply don't have that information.
But so it sounds like Hank, Mr. Perkins, what you're suggesting is that the council wait until further information comes from Sergeant Stringer's stakeholders? Or you're thinking that that's?
I I would say to do that because I would not want to be in the position, we adopt something and then have, for whatever reason, someone come back on the backside and say that we need to change it.
All right, Ms. Hunt mentioned something earlier in terms of a rationale for also waiting as did Ms.
We already have a a chapter seventeen that it that achieves ninety-five percent of everything we talked about.
Okay, so any anyone else have any other comments? So is the consensus to wait? Head head nods, thumbs up, thank you, Mr. Smitherman, good. All right, anything else you need on this, Hank or Bo? Mr. Perkins, Mr. House, I'm sorry. Okay, so so let's move on to item number nine. I have it as uh, leave Ms. Talbert, this is your uh a public hearing.
I wasn't sure where where we were, to be honest, but. And um, street trees, we're at street trees. Okay, can everybody see, I've shared my screen. Um, I wanted to go through with you, I know that we've been talking about this for quite a few months now. Um, in regards to the planning board and the U D O text amendment that I have developed alongside with the help of the Louisville Beautification Committee and the planning board. So I just want to go through real quick the the major highlights and changes to the ordinance. The actual text of the amendment is in your packets. So there are three different chapters that are impacted, chapter A definitions, chapter B landscaping standards, and then chapter D subdivisions. This applies mainly to new uh residential developments that are going through or going in if they get approved, um, you know, and and have to require street trees along the roadway. This is where those things, this this impact will apply to. Again, the main reasons for the change is they cause street trees, uh, once they get hit maturity, they cause safety concerns, uh, roots uh for sidewalks, overhanging canopy into streets cause vehicular traffic hazards. Um, and then our public works department has to go out and maintain those trees. It does become a burden of the town with uh the maintenance of the sidewalks and streets and and those sorts of things as well. So in chapter A, that's the definitions chapter of our unified development ordinance, we have changed the definition of large, medium and small variety trees. These definitions are based on their height at maturity. So the new definition for large would be um equal to or greater than fifty feet. A medium variety tree would be equal to or greater than thirty feet and less than fifty feet. And then a small variety tree would be less than thirty feet. And again, that would be based on their height at maturity. So then in chapter B, um, we have a suggested plant materials list in our landscaping standards and our buffer yard standards. So we updated this list um to accommodate the new definition. So we had to move some of those trees around into those different categories. And we also added some additional trees that were recommended by the Louisville Beautification Committee for native trees and species that are in our area. So some more highlighted changes. The main thing that we wanted to take a look at is in in order to um help the issues that we have with sidewalks and and overhanging into the road is the setback requirements that will be required for the plantings of the street trees. If a developer plants a small variety tree, they're required to plant that four feet back from the curb or sidewalk, uh, whichever one would be required. A medium variety tree, if they planted that, they would have to set it back six feet from the curb or sidewalk. And then we no longer are going to allow large variety trees to be planted in um the right of way for street trees. This is based on L B C or the Louisville Beautification Committee recommendation because of the very large root systems. Once the trees get really large, they interfere with utility lines sometimes if if they happen to be overhead. Most, most of our new developments, they are required to be in ground. But um, just just um in some of those other instances. And then also, um, they interfere with street lighting and those types of things as well. What we also want to start requiring is landscaping plans or the landscaping to be shown specifically on um the site plan for the major development. They would need to show wooded areas and natural features that are to remain and to be preserved during construction. Existing and proposed plantings in the buffer areas, the street trees, like we have mentioned tonight, and any other plantings that may be required of them in uh their development process. Again, the main reason for this, for the landscape plans being required at the time of submittal and approval of the subdivision, when it goes through the planning board and town council, would be for them to mainly take consideration of the placement of those trees based on where the driveways, utilities, um, those new setback requirements that we want to um require distance between the trees to meet those requirements. And and you can see the list in front of you. We want this to be um in the in the front of planning for these developments and not an afterthought. Because like I said, once um you get the driveways, the house is built, utilities in the ground, street lighting, those types of things, it's very hard to go out there and and find where to put a street tree due to all of those hindrances that are that are already um in place and and in the ground. So the last thing, um, this was also recommended by the Louisville Beautification Committee is to, we we are adding in a warranty period for the the street trees. Once they are planted, they would, the developer or their designate, it might be a homeowners association, they would warrant the trees for one year. We chose one year because usually that's about the timeframe that it would take from the plant or the trees to be planted um by the time the town would take over their trees. Now, uh, keep in mind, if they, street trees are required regarding. street trees are required regardless if the town maintains the road or not. We just want these requirements to be in place in the event that once the developer or homeowners association, whichever it may be, does petition the town to have their trees taken over. Then we want to make sure that the, the trees are in good health and good standing and are in, in planted in a good place that aren't going to cause issues, you know, fifteen to twenty years down the road when the tree is at maturity. So I will answer any questions that anyone has on this text amendment.
Uh, thank you, Stacy. Well done to you and the Louisville Beautification Committee. Do you feel that this will alleviate some of the situations we've had in the past where the roots came up into the sidewalk and we had to go and break up sidewalk and, and all of that? Is that kind of the, the premise of this?
Yes, that's exactly what we're hoping for. When, when we went a while ago to the Louisville Beautification Committee, that was our main concern. We wanted their help with determining a way to really fix those issues that, that we have. I know it's been an issue for Public Works for quite some time, so we definitely wanted to go ahead and get on that and, and try to get that fixed. So it's no longer a burden for town for, for the taxpayer dollars and, and that sort of thing. And even the residents, you know, whenever they have these beautiful trees, we don't like to have to go in and maintain those in, in some forms of fashion. So hopefully this will alleviate those things.
Thank you. Other questions?
Just was wondering about how do you determine when that year warranty starts on those things? I mean.
They will be, they will be letting us know when they're being planted. And two, those street trees have to be planted either before I sign off on the final plat for them to record the subdivision to start selling those lots. So we'll kind of have a date attached to it in, in that manner too. Or our ordinance allows performance bonds or surety bonds, letters of credit, those types of things to be put up for some last improvements. So if they are to do that prior to the signing of a final plat, then those letters of credits have expiration dates that they have, say for instance, if, if the planting of the street trees was going to be in that letter of credit, then they would notify us when that credit has been fulfilled and we would have a date assigned to it as that as well.
I, I guess the reason I'm trying to ask this is I know that as far as the town taking over streets is after there's a certain amount of build out and then of course they have to be finished to the, the final grade and that type of stuff. How does that maybe all tie in together with the trees and things of that nature? Because sometimes that takes more than a year for that to, to occur with asphalt and so forth. And but at the meantime, I, I'm just thinking of Conrad Farm. I drive through there about once, you know, every two or three weeks just to see what's going on and parts of it have got the, the sidewalks in, the street lamps and have not, none of us been final paved yet, but yet I see the street plantings and then certain areas that don't have them yet and all. So I, I guess that's all I'm trying to do is try to follow the timeline of how it goes in and then how this warranty would work with that. No, since you mentioned that.
Um, the warranty would work if with, if within, if the town takes the street over within that year, then, then those trees become ours. But say for instance, if we do not, like, I mean, we've had a subdivision that was, you know, ten years or so passed when the development was built out, that they finally came back and petitioned the town to take over those, those streets. When we take over the streets, we take over everything within the right of way. So, so the same thing kind of goes with the sidewalks, say for instance, within the timeframe that the town has not taken over the street, it would be up to the homeowners association to still maintain those sidewalks, maintain those trees, that sort of thing. And then at the time that they finally do petition the town, that is when we take over maintenance of the street, the sidewalks and the street trees. So we wanted to put that year in there in the instance that if we take the road over within, if, if it's less than a year of the trees being planted, that warranty is still in the U D O that they still have to warrant those for that full year.
So, so I guess what I'm hearing is it's really going to be tied to when the streets are taken over by the town.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Which includes the sidewalks and the street trees.
Yes, sir. That's when we would start maintaining the trees.
All right. Thank you so very much. I appreciate that.
Other questions? Right. Well, since this is a public here, public hearing on Zoom, now shall we open the, or I shall open the public hearing? And Stacy, do you want to provide?
Yes.
Public with information on how they can access and?
I'm trying to find it.
Or Hank, did, did you have it earlier, Hank?
It's me. I'm just trying to.
Hey.
There we go. Is that it?
Nope. That's still.
Oh, there we go. I found it. Okay. I didn't have it on the right page. There we go. And I, I do want to mention Jean Marie before we get started with the public hearing that the vote, since it's an electronic meeting, it, the council will need to decide when to hold the vote for tonight's public hearing.
Yes. Would you mind, since you do this so often and so well, would you just cue up the public about how they can call in right now for the, for their comments?
Absolutely. If you are joining us via Zoom, then you can, just like we do with public comment, you can use the raise hand function to participate in the public hearing for the matter before you, for the U D O text amendment for street trees. If you are calling in by phone, you can utilize star six to raise your hand. And then once you're called upon, I believe it's star nine in order to unmute yourself if you would like to participate in the public hearing that way.
Keep Miss Talbert. Anyone, anyone indicating they want to speak?
I don't see anybody.
All right. Give it another few seconds. Nothing?
Nope.
All right. Well, are you all comfortable with us closing the, the public hearing then at this point, since we have no one chiming in? Council? Yep. Okay.
Yes.
Right. Then we will close the public hearing and ask for any further council discussion.
I just got a question, Stacy. This is something that can wait till our, at least briefing in June, correct?
Yes, sir. It can. We do not have any developments that this would affect on the docket as of right now.
Okay. With that being said, I'd recommend that we set the date for council consideration at our briefing meeting on what is that? That'll be June the third, I believe.
June the third, yes.
Yeah. In Texas on the first. See my daughter.
So there's a motion to set the, the council consideration for June the third.
Oh, second.
So Mr. Franklin, with Ms. Hunt, with the second, any further discussion? All right. Can I get Ms. Welch?
Approved.
Thank you. Dr. Sadler?
Hi.
Thank you, Mr. Franklin. Thank you, Mr. Smitherman.
Hi.
Great. Ms. Hunt?
Hi.
And Ms. Foster is an I, so that's unanimous. Anything else, Ms. Talbert?
We just want to give the final last shout out to the Louisville Beautification Committee. This text amendment would not have been able, I would not have been able to do it without them and their expertise on the matter. So thank you very much, L B C.
Thank you for that. And it also is a a plug for how we can tap expertise in the boards and committees and cross pollinate and send up information that's really good and strong. So well, well, well done. I, I think that's a great model. Right. Next, I think we have item number ten, if I'm not mistaken. This is appointments, Ms. Walker. You all tracking on this? Is that, does that make sense? And does that fit with what you guys are saying? Thank you.
That's where we go back to, yes, the taxes.
Yeah, everything got switched around, but this is the next item.
What's that?
Can you hear me?
But you're coming in and out.
Okay. Is this better? Maybe I needed to move closer.
That's it. Thank you.
Okay, sorry. Okay. The first one that we have is appointment order two zero two one zero zero three, and that is appointing Ellen Lee to the Beautification Committee. She has been attending their meetings, so they are familiar with Ms. Lee.
Okay. Motion? Mr. Franklin with the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Welch, any discussion? All right. All in favor? Ms. Hunt?
Hi.
And Mr. Smitherman?
Hi.
Ms. Welch?
Hi.
Dr. Sadler?
Hi.
Mr. Franklin? Ms. Foster's an I, so that's unanimous. Anything else on that, Ms. Walker? All right. Get on.
The next one is appointment order two zero two one zero zero four. And this is an appointment for Ed Smith to the Triad Municipal Alcoholic Beverage Control System Board. This will be a three-year term beginning July first and ending on June thirtieth of 2024. Currently, Mr. Smith had fulfilled someone else's term. So now he is as- asking for his own complete term.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Smith with the motion, second. Ms. Dr. Sadler, thank you. Any further discussion? All right. How about a vote? Ms. Welch?
Hi.
Thank you, Ms. Dr. Sadler.
Hi.
Mr. Franklin? Ms. Hunt?
Hi.
Mr. Smitherman?
Hi.
And I'm an I, Ms. Foster's an I. Right. That's unanimous. Anything else on that, Ms. Walker?
On that one?
All right.
Ready to move on?
I am. Let's go.
Okay. Appointment order two zero two one zero zero five is appointing Lynn Fulton as an alternate to zoning board of adjustment for a term of three years ending June thirtieth, 2024. This is the one position that was not filled back in March. And if you recall, Mr. Fulton had requested appointment to planning board was, but was not selected. So we did get in touch with, well, we didn't get in touch with him. He got in touch with us and said he would be willing to serve on zoning board. So this is the appointment order.
Thank you. And he's also been serving on utilities. Correct. Thank you. All right. You guys know the drill.
Motion, Melissa Hunt.
Thank you, Ms. Hunt. Second by Mr. Franklin. Any further discussion? All right. How about the vote? Dr. Sadler?
Hi.
Mr. Franklin? Smitherman?
Hi.
Ms. Hunt?
Hi.
Welch?
Hi.
Ms. Foster is an I. All right. That is unanimous. Anything else under your section here, Ms. Walker?
Appellate appointments, no. Thank you.
I think I see you're up, folks. For those of you who are watching, we're under new business. Does that sound correct, council members? New business?
That's the next time. That's what I have.
Okay. Smitherman, did you want to say something? Or are you?
Yeah, I'd like to request a break before.
Yes. Okay. That's a great point. Thank you. It's eight thirty. You guys all right with that?
Sure.
How long? Five, ten minutes? Pick? Five. Five. Right. Eight thirty-six. We'll see you back. Good. Okay. And Fred, for the rest of you who are just joining, Mr. Franklin indicated he needed to excuse himself, so he won't be joining us the rest of the session. Okay? All right. Anything in particular I need to say, Bo, or can we just get started again?
Let's get started.
Let's get started. All righty. So we are, for those of us or those folks watching, we are now entering new business. And we have, to my knowledge, four items, and the first of which is Ms. Walker's.
I'm gonna try to share my screen.
You can do it.
I know. I don't know. Where is it? Well, I kept it here, so let's see if this works.
Zoom, crash.
Can you see it?
We see you.
You don't, you don't see it?
Move your cursor around to the bottom where it says share screen and click on that first.
I did. I clicked on that green thing, didn't I?
Apparently not.
Okay, hold on.
Try it again.
Share screen.
I did that.
Okay. Hank, you said you've got it?
What do I have?
So.
All right.
All right.
Throw a shoe at it. Throw a shoe at it.
Now, Joyce. Okay, so who, who else had something, Ms.? That can help.
Okay, I'm looking for the proposal that the L B C would like to have everyone to approve tonight.
Hold on a second. Give me a second.
But Stacy has it like that.
It's in the packet.
Hold on.
Why is it this shit? Oh, there. Wait, hold it. I think I found it. No, I can't. Never mind.
Stacy Talbert.
Did I say that?
I love her. She's, oh yeah. Okay.
Joyce, tell me, you, I'll just follow your lead.
Okay. This is, this is actually the the form that we would be giving to anyone who asks for it, but this is what the L B C has asked that you approve. A lot of residents have asked about putting trees and benches in Jack Warren Park as memorials or honorary, honorariums to people or families that they know. So it's been a long time. Hank, you can probably chime in about the trees, but trees are being planted. And benches are also going to be placed out there are, once we get a new.
Trees are planted.
All of them? Because there was one point where two were not.
As far as I know, all the ones intended to be implanted are planted.
They're all planted. Stacy, if you could scroll a little bit down to see. Okay, now that right there is just the form that people will fill out.
That's good.
Yeah, keep going. One more. There you go.
Yeah.
The L B C has provided a layout of every location for all of the trees in the park. They've also provided a location where benches will go. The price for doing an honorary or memorial for a tree is three hundred dollars. And one for a bench is six hundred dollars. And if you're asking why since there, why is there such a disparity on the pricing? The benches actually cost more than six hundred dollars. We're not trying to recoup everything. We're just trying to make sure that we get something back. But regardless of whether trees or benches are selected, the price will include everything. It'll include maintenance. It'll include a plaque that will show who did it and who it's honoring, et cetera, et cetera. So all that they're asking is that we try to go ahead and approve this because they actually have people waiting in the wings to do these dedications.
Yes, yes. Great. Anything else, Ms. Walker, on this?
That's, that's all I have. I just need an approval on that resolution and we can move forward.
Motion by Ms. Hunt, second. Thank you, Ms. Welch. Any further discussion on it? Other than, I, I'll just add one thing, which is thank you for your efforts, Ms. Walker, and for Ms. Talbert's immediate on the, on the job, because we were briefed on this last week, but I know we, as a council, wanted to make sure the public was able to see that plan. So thanks you guys for putting that together. So that's all I have. Any further discussion?
So I just want to say, sharing the screen for me never works. I don't know why.
We're setting a goal. Next month, we're doing it. Let's take the votes.
Let me, I, I got Melissa as the person that made it, but I didn't hear the second.
Mr. Smitherman?
Thank you.
Yes. All right. So for a vote, Dr. Sadler, would you start us off?
Hi.
Thank you, Mr. Smitherman.
Hi.
Okay. And Ms. Hunt?
Hi.
Ms. Welch?
Hi.
Ms. Foster says is an I. And do we record Mr. Franklin as a yes right now?
Mr. Horn's votes are yes, based upon their absence.
Thank you for that, Bo. All right. So that's unanimous. Anything else on that item? Nope. All righty. Let's move on. And it looks like Hank, this is a, an item that sets the public hearing for the budget.
Yes, this is a consideration of resolution two zero two one zero two eight, setting a public hearing to receive comments on the 2021, 2022 budget.
The date for that public hearing, Hank, will be June tenth.
Yes, ma'am. And while I'm thinking about it, folks, that because this is a public hearing and this is a pandemic virtual meeting scenario. and this is a pandemic virtual meeting scenario, we will need to decide a, a time in which to allow 24 hours to pass after the public hearing on the budget is done, on that day. Customarily, we come back on a, on a Monday for that. But we, we will need to have that done fairly soon after the public hearing in order to give the requisite 24-hour time for people to make comments after the public hearing, and to be able to take action on that, the vote on the, on the budget after the public hearing is done.
So we, do we handle that separately, Bo, where we set the public hearing, and then we had the, the separate vote for when we're going to actually vote? Or can be one motion? Okay, all right, then we'll entertain a motion. Mr. Smitherman? With the motion to?
Set the public hearing and the follow-up date, David?
For the 14th, perhaps?
Yes, that's correct. Everhow, you see it needs to be said.
And what about the timing? Do we, do you all need that as well, 6 o'clock?
I think they're standard at 6, but yeah.
Okay, all right, that's the motion for a second.
Excuse me, what's the date of the meeting?
Regular meeting, June 10th, that's the Wednesday.
Okay.
Following.
That's a Thursday.
Bo, it's a Thursday, the 10th.
I'm sorry, Thursday, the 10th, you're right, followed by Monday, the 14th.
So the motion is for the Thursday, the 10th, and the follow-up being Monday, the 14th at 6. Is there a second? Second, Ms. Dr. Sadler. Any further discussion? All right, Ms. Hunt, how do you vote on this?
Hi.
Thank you. Mr. Smitherman?
Hi.
Right, Dr. Sadler?
Hi.
Ms. Welch?
Hi.
And Ms. Foster's an eye, with Mayor and Mr. Franklin being eyes because they are absent. Is that correct, Bo?
Because they left, yep.
Because they left, thank you. All right, anything else on that, Hank?
Ma'am, that's it.
All right, I've got Mrs. Walker up for taxes. Everybody, wake up, taxes.
The town does not collect taxes. All taxes are collected by the Forsyth County Tax Collector. But he can't just do that on his own. We have to authorize that. So we do that every year. Ordinance 2021026 is the one that will be authorizing him to collect the 2021 taxes.
Okay. Is there a motion? Or, thank you, Mr. Smitherman. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Welch, thank you. Any further discussion beyond what Ms. Walker mentioned or questions? Right, so let's vote. Mr. Smitherman?
Hi.
Ms. Dr. Sadler?
Hi.
Ms. Welch?
Hi.
Ms. Hunt?
Hi.
Ms. Foster's an eye, with Mayor and Mr. Franklin also being eyes since they're absent. Ms. Walker, I see there's a follow-up here on ordinance 2021027.
That's correct. In addition to collecting the current taxes, we are now going to have to authorize the tax collector to collect from 2020 back 10 years. And that happens like that every year. It's always back.
Okay.
Little approval.
Ms. Dr. Sadler motions for approval. Mr. Smitherman with the second. Any discussion? Other than, so, so my question is, so this happens, you said? All right.
Do this every year.
Yeah, okay. All right, so motion and a second, all in favor, Ms. Hunt, we'll start with you.
Hi.
Thank you, Ms. Welch.
Hi.
Dr. Sadler?
Hi.
Mr. Smitherman?
Hi.
Foster's eye, and again, for our legal counsel, Mr. Franklin and Mayor are eyes since they're absent. Any other, Ms. Walker, or Hank, or staff? Nope, okay. Administrative reports. I think that's you, Mr. Perkins.
The only thing I have to announce right now is that town offices will be closed at the end of the month on 30, on the 31st, in observance of Memorial Day. And then, let me see, I will say one thing, that previously we talked about a schedule for bid openings on the Gateway Project U5617. We've had a procedural issue that came up regarding an advertisement notification process. We've had to push back the bid opening, or the bid opening date for that. We're going to do that on now, June 7th. It will push the, the time back a little bit, but we'll see what we can do to expedite the process in order to keep the delay from affecting the start date of the Gateway Project as, as the best as we can.
Comments, questions? For Hank? Right, next.
That's it, ma'am.
So it looks to me that Stacy, Ms. Walker, Ms. Talbert, Ms. Walker, you all don't have any reports?
I would just put a plug in for the comprehensive plan and the Parks and Rec Master Plan project called Louisville Tomorrow is up and live. We have had much better participation with the public survey online as to date than we did the actual public meeting that we held on Tuesday. But if everybody will go take a look at that, they can see that on the website. There's a link up at the very top that'll take you to the Louisville Tomorrow page. And then there's a button that you can click for the online survey. So, or if, if there's questions, comments, they can email or call me, and I can direct them on how to take that as well. And there's links on Facebook for that, too.
Stacy, can you just clarify what's in, like, what the purpose of the survey? I mean, I know the purpose of the survey, but what kind of questions are in the survey? And what you guys are hoping to glean from that?
There's, there's all kinds of different questions, steering from land use and development to the local economy, Parks and Rec, you know, there's, there's different kind of categories. And then there's obviously some demographic questions that go along with, with every survey. But we hope that, that residents will give us, I mean, there's places in, in each area to really give us, it, it comments if there's something that's not in the survey that you want us to know. They're going to be taking this data and the, the information that they get back, just like they would in a public involvement session, in order to use this information that they get from residents to build the comp plan and then also the Parks and Rec plan. So it's, it's just as vital that people take this as they do attend those public meetings. But sometimes, you know, I know people aren't able to attend those. So the public survey is another avenue for people to still be engaged and participate in the process.
And if, and is it your recommendation that if they have previously participated in surveys, that they should still participate in this survey as well?
Absolutely. Because the town survey that we do about every four years is a little bit different. Some of the questions might be similar, but it does serve a different purpose. So I would, I would recommend that, that all residents, when they have the chance in the next day or two, to go and take that survey.
Thank you. Anyone else? Has anyone had a chance to take the survey? Look at it yet? Yeah, yeah, I, I had an opportunity. It's, it's really well done, and it's one of those where you could move through it quickly, or you can spend some time. One of the last questions was really cool because they, they give you an opportunity to interact and, and identify where you think there are some opportunities in the town, some weak areas. It, it was well done. So, thank you, Stacy, and steering committee and crew. But yeah, get the word out. Any other comment? Yeah.
Come, come right back to something I'd like to mention, just to, to put it in your, on your radar as council for it. It's our favorite subject on street lighting. Just thought about this with the Gateway Project. When, we are going to hopefully be moving soon to authorizing and starting the construction of the Gateway Project. As I've previously said, Duke Energy is going to be doing the lighting, which is outside of the scope of the project. This is something we're doing on ourselves for street lighting through Duke Energy. There is a, if memory serves, from the community center, there's about an eight-month lag from the order on the lights to the time that they're put in. The construction of the Gateway Project will take approximately eight months. So what I'm anticipating is that I'm going to contact Duke Energy, have them develop the cost estimates and the, the information for council to approve so that we can go ahead and get the lights in the order underway, so that it is coordinated, so that light installation can be set up towards the end of the project when the gateway is almost nearing completion for Duke Energy to get in there. So, to be seen probably in the next month or so. Okay.
Anything else? Ms. Talbert? That you had? Ms. Walker? Anything? Bo?
Nope.
Mr. House? And Mr. Moser? Anything? All right, so moving on to approvals at the briefing, I think, Hank, this is also.
Yes, okay, let me see.
I guess.
Approvals on the briefing. The first had to be the recommendate, had to do with the recommendation from the Special Projects Review Committee to donate to the Meals on Wheels program. Council approved ordinance 2021021, amending budget ordinance 2020001 in an amount of $9,000 to donate to senior services for the Meals on Wheels program to benefit six seniors living in the town of Louisville. The next area had to do with Mary Alice Warren Community Center. We had two ordinances and two resolutions considered and approved. First was ordinance 2021023, amending capital project ordinance of the Town of Louisville Town Council Community Center Capital Projects Fund to transfer additional funds to increase the budget for AV for furniture in an amount of $49,390. The next, the town considered and approved ordinance 2021024, amending budget ordinance 2020001 in an amount of $49,390 to transfer additional funds from the general fund to the community center capital project. Next was the acceptance of Resolution 2021030, awarding security contract to Sage Security Solutions of Morseville in an amount not to exceed $53,088, and directing the manager to execute the contract. And lastly, Resolution 2021031, awarding audiovisual contract to Clark Powell of Winston-Salem in an amount not to exceed $119,990, and directing the manager to execute the contract. We moved on and then approved Resolution 2021033, declaring surplus items and authorizing the electronic auction, auction of surplus personal property. And then moving on to our issue of stormwater detention system at the annex, we approved ordinance 2021025, amending budget ordinance 2020001 in an amount of $11,020 to increase the budget for contract with industrial vacuum service to clean out the stormwater detention system at the annex. Next, we approved Resolution 2021032, awarding contract to Industrial Vacuum Services Incorporated, Ivac, in an amount not to exceed $18,500, and directing the manager to execute the contract. Next, we moved on and approved Resolution 2021034, awarding the paving contract to Yadkin Valley Paving of Winston-Salem in an amount not to exceed $156,421.84 for streets noted in the accompanying contract. Then we got an approved Resolution 2021035, awarding a contract to Hills Paving for the resurfacing of the Town Hall Annex parking lot and asphalt areas in an amount not to exceed $17,750. And lastly, we approved Resolution 2021036, approving a three-year lease agreement for telephone services for Town Hall, the Town Hall Annex, and the G. Galloway Rentals Community Center. That's it.
Mr. Perkins, if, if I might, there's a correction. The very first ordinance that, that stated serving six people in, in the community, it's actually 12?
No, let me correct on that. It's 12 people that could be, but the request was to service six.
Oh, thank you, Joyce.
That was what the 9,000 was for.
Thank you, that, that refreshes my memory. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, and I should have probably queued up at the top for, for the public, Hank, and, and chime in here. These are actions or approvals that occurred at the briefing, and this is just a, a placeholder where this council makes sure that the public is apprised of that. Is that a fair statement?
That is true. And to give some historical reference for those in attendance in the, in this evening, customarily, the, the town does not take action at the briefing, and actually, it's more of a work session. We, I guess, by way of custom, have more people that normally attend this evening's meeting, which is our business, regular meeting for it. So when the town council does take action in the briefing meeting that is normally held on the first Thursday of the month, we always want to make sure that we bring forth those items that have been approved at the briefing for the benefit of the public that attends the regular meeting on the second Thursday of the month.
Thank you. Okay, all righty, so we are now rounding third and heading home. We are at item 13, which is for the good of the order, is what I have. Is that consistent with you folks? Okay, and this is the second time, as the mayor always wonderfully indicates, that the public can check in, speak up, and tell us how they're thinking and feeling. And basically, it's not a dialogue, but it's really just an opportunity, as he mentioned earlier in tonight's meeting, for them to, to speak up. We do try to limit that to about a three-minute period, just to be respectful of everyone's time. So that being the case, Stacy again has to be right on it with her information that's posted. So I'll ask if there's anyone who's out there wanting to share with the council. Anybody?
I don't see anybody so far, Jean Marie. If anybody would like to address the council, then they would need to do so by using the raise hand function. It doesn't look like we have anybody that's tuned in by telephone.
Okay.
Yep, we have one, Mr. Blaine Brenton.
Okay, thank you.
Hank, you see that?
I've done it now, Mr. Blaine Brenton, you can talk.
And would you, again, for the record, just state your name and your address, sir? Thank you.
Blaine Brenton, 1955, Conrad, Sommer Road, Pottstown. I wanted to be able to get a copy, or know where to get the PDF file for the ordinance at 2021022.
Okay.
Where do you find that?
So if we direct you to speak to our manager or town, Ms. Walker?
It's, it should be posted, our communications person put this information up, and so it was in the packet. So all he will need to do is take a look, you know, go on to the website and look at it.
Go to Louisville.net, LouisvilleNorthCarolina.net, that website?
Town of Louisville, yes, that's correct.
Okay, and it's under?
Agendas.
If you go to government, it's under agendas and minutes.
So go to our website, go to government, under agenda, in minutes. Is that correct, Ms. Talbert?
Or town council.
Council, okay.
I've been there before, thank you.
Thank you very much. And if you run into a problem, let us know tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you. Good night, anyone else?
I don't see anybody else raising their hand.
Okay. All right. That's the case. Counsel, are you ready to move on to discussions? Although I think it looks like I should mention that written comments also, Stacy, is that fair, could be sent to town clerk@lewisvillenc.net, which would go to Ms. Walker. Right, thank you. So, next item, for the good of the order, we have council comments and discussion, and there is a, an item here. Ms. Hunt, did you want to speak to the social media policy discussion?
Sure, yes, thank you for the opportunity. So I'd like to propose that we develop a social media policy inclusive of, including elected, appointed board and committee members, and any, like, any appointed officials, as well as staff. So I just kind of wanted to have some conversation around that. I know that other municipalities participate in, in that, and I feel like it's time for us to kind of take a look at that, since social media use is increasing just from, along, along the way. And the intent would be to really ensure that individuals are not interfering with the operations of the town, that they're maintaining respect, good faith, competence of our constituents. So that's really. So that's really, that's kind of where I wanted to start and get, get some thoughts about that discussion.
Mr. Smitherman?
I'll start and say, you know, I'm not a big fan of government dictating everything that we do, because I think we all should have a certain amount of liberties. But it also, to me, it goes back to character of an individual and a, a sense of what your responsibilities are when you belong, either on Town Council or you're appointed to one of the committees. There should be things that we don't do and don't say. And I'm in agreement with Melissa on this, because I feel that whatever may be out there, different people's views are different, that we definitely need to have something in place just to govern and keep everybody safe.
Other thoughts, comments? Ms. Welch?
I was moving on past Melissa's subject, is that all right? I didn't want to.
No, no, if you don't mind, just, Hank, you were gonna say something?
I will say, the town does have a social media policies brief in the town's personnel policy for it. I can show you what that is for, for town employees, and then you can get an idea of whether or not we want to elaborate on that for town employees, and we may want to search for, for examples for other public officials, hold on one second.
So Hank, I had done some, some background prior to, and Durham has a really good social media policy that, you know, we could kind of, that you guys could consider pulling from. So there are other various municipalities throughout the state. But again, my, my intent here would be that we are including elected, appointed officials as well as staff.
Understood, I just was gonna show you what we currently have for, in the personnel policy for computer use and social media.
Thank you.
Let's see, specific to social media. Employee should exercise judgment when publishing on social media websites. Abuse of social media can be grounds for discipline, up to including dismissal. Employees shall avoid posting organizational logos on blogs and online profiles. Employees should exercise professional judgment when posting to avoid publishing defamatory statements regarding the organization and its employees. And then that's the one for, specific for social media, but this is the extent of our social media policy so far for employees.
So, I guess, as a, as part of this discussion, I mean, is there, is, is there any opposition from council? And I don't know if this is my question to ask, but is there any opposition from, from various members of council? Or could we give any kind of insight to Hank, to kind of draw up some things with, and then bring us some things back? I mean, what's everyone's thoughts, I've only heard from a couple people, so.
Well, I have a thought, pick me.
I'm not, yeah.
Well, you're, it's your agenda item, so, yeah, you know what hit me as I was listening to what, what you brought up in terms of sort of parallel tracks? And Ms. Talbert, Mr. Perkins, trying to be formal here. I, I was reminded, and I think maybe Jeannie, our communication specialist, might be watching, too. So we have a, a content matter expert in Ms. Jeannie Taylor, who, who manages social media. So A, she's gonna have access to some of the stuff that you referenced, like what other municipalities are doing. She works with another municipality, so she would be a good resource. And then secondly, the other thing that hit me was when we were interviewing the boards and committees and had our last focus group, I'm thinking Stacy, that it might make sense to get some of those folks providing some, a little bit of feedback as well. Because when we're developing, we've been working on this orientation pack, and I'm thinking about what you got from Asheville, Stacy, and some other items, there, there are some, there are some things that we could pull, and, I don't know, I'm thinking that, that it would be reasonable to come up with something in the next two months, easily. If that, if that meets with your timeframe, Ms. Hunt?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm seven, so these are just my thoughts as far as, and again, this is not really any infringement on First Amendment, or, you know, right to free speech, it's really, in a, in a professional organization, that right is not necessarily absolute, when involving matters of, you know, official town business and issues. And I'm sure Bo can probably get into the weeds on that, but I'm, I'm thinking that we, you know, it's, it's really just a good matter of practice in most organizations to have such policies and procedures in place.
So Ms. Hunt, ask for your comments. Anybody, Mr. Smitherman says yes, move forward.
Sounds good.
Any comments, concerns? Nothing, okay. Staff, any ideas?
I'll touch base with Melissa to get an idea of, of the specific examples she's been looking at as a good start for at least being able to understand exactly without question what she's got in mind when she brought this forward. And then I will see what I can do to mine, some policies from other municipalities. Hopefully, we can do this, I don't know if it makes any difference if we stay on size-appropriate municipalities versus, you know, City of Raleigh versus Lizard Lake, North Carolina, but it might be, there might be a difference there. But anyway, I don't think there's something, this is something we can't look into and bring forward in the future.
Thank you. That made your needs?
To Jean Marie, that, it was like a video, I guess, that I shared with you when we were talking about onboarding for board and committee members. I would be more than willing to share that with you, Hank and Melissa, in order for you to maybe get some ideas from that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the point is, is, yes, moving forward.
I don't believe I've seen the orientation program that is used for members coming on to boards or committees. Does that currently exist, and?
Um.
Who does it?
Currently, I think it's about time for this. Normally, what we've done in the past is after boards and committees have been appointed, we get with Town Attorney Bo House, and we make the rounds through the various boards and committees. Bo gives a presentation on statutory authority and how it relates to rule or roles and responsibilities of staff, Town Council. And then each of the, the various boards and committees will go over their, their charters. We will talk about acting as a public body, quorum, how you conduct your meetings and things of that nature. That's what we have been doing historically.
But if you're asking Dr. Sadler about what we've been talking about with having an orientation program, that is still a work in progress, we were hoping to give you guys an update tonight, but frankly, with the way the agenda went, June would be the earliest, so. But, does that fit, Stacy? Okay, other questions, comments? Ms. Welch, you had something else?
Oh, yes, oh, Mr. Moser, I just hate that you'd be sitting here all night and not get to talk about bulky Adam pickup. Do you have any latest news on how that's coming together?
Yeah, and I apologize, they, I think, after today, the only thing left is Friday's route, which is still a lot. I've reached out to them every day, emailed them every day. Stacy Powers reached out to them, Joyce has reached out to them. We're still getting inundated, obviously, with, with questions on why it's taking so long. They have personnel problems. It's just, what, next, next Monday will be the fifth week. We're, I think we're gonna have to have a talk with them once this is over and try to hash out some things and make the next bulky move smoother. So.
But thank, thank you for, you know, staying on top of it and, and the patience required.
I'll just say, as I said earlier, this is all backed up because of COVID. So I think just knowing people are really trying to do their best, and they're frontline workers and essential workers. And so whatever we can do to just let people know, hey, we're doing our best, everyone else is doing their best, I think that helps to mitigate. So, thank you for staying on it.
Absolutely.
Yeah, all right, anything else for the group? If not, again, you know the, you know the drill, folks. Mr. Smitherman, you have something to say?
It's a motion to quit.
Adjourn.
That's a good word.
Frame, how about, would you accept an amendment to your motion to adjourn instead of quit? All right, is there a second?
I'll take it.
Thanks, Ms. Welch, all right, voting, please, Ms. Hunt?
Hi.
Thank you, Dr. Sadler.
Bye.
Thank you, Mr. Smitherman?
Aye.
And Ms. Welch, did I?
Good night.
Good night, Jean Marie is a, a, an aye, Mr. Franklin and the mayor are ayes in their absence. So I will say we are adjourned, and it is nine fifteen. Thank you for everyone watching, thank you for staff, for council, for legal council. Your time is greatly appreciated and recognized, so.